Well, good afternoon, everybody. I want to welcome all of you to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission today. Give us just a minute. We're still kind of getting used to being back in here, to be quite frank with you. So I'm going to let people finish getting logged in and settled in, and we'll get started here in just another 60 seconds or so. Everybody logged in down there except for Mary? You guys ready to go? Good to go. Okay, well, we'll get started. Well, welcome, everybody, to the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, June 10th. Appreciate everybody coming down. Frankly, it's nice to be back in person. We're going to try to wrap this meeting up in 29 minutes so we can watch the OU Women's softball game.[193.20][193.20](Laughter). As an Oklahoma State fan, I'm still eager to see them win today. I can tell you that, so I hope they do well. Just a couple of things before we get started with the meeting's agenda. If you would, go and turn your cellphones to silent. We're sitting in this plexiglass shell, and from experience when we were back in here temporarily, I'm leaving my mask off deliberately so that you can hear and see what I'm saying in an effort to more clearly communicate. We've gotten some issues with feedback on these speakers in the past. If you can't hear me at any time when we're trying to communicate on a case item, I'd prefer that you just let me know that, so I can ensure everybody hears and is apprised of what we're discussing at the time. If you haven't signed up to speak today and you wish to be heard on an item, there are slips of paper out front. You can sign up. You can hand that piece of paper to staff. They'll get it in my hands, and I will call you at the appropriate time. I do have a small stack already of folks who have signed up to speak, so if you've done that, thank you. When you come up to the podium, please start out by giving us your name and your address for the record, so that we have that, and then we'd love to hear anything you want to tell us about your item. We do limit speakers' comments to five minutes, and I'll just tell you at the outset, if the comments are repetitive, we've already heard a point, or we understand the point you're making, I'll reserve the right just to cut it off so we can continue with the commission's discussion on the item, but I certainly want to hear from anybody who wants to be heard. I assure you of that. So with those comments, we'll go ahead and get started, and our first order of business today is to receive the minutes of the May 27, 2021, meeting. If there's no discussion from planning commissioners, I'll take a motion on those minutes when somebody is ready to make it.
So moved.
I have a motion, although at the moment I don't have a dashboard.
Second.
It's more awkward when we buffer when we're not on a Zoom meeting. Let me know what's going on down there. Okay. That motion was made by Commissioner Clare, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
Anybody have a trick to get out of full screen mode without a keyboard?
Plug in a keyboard?[341.56][341.56](Laughter). Sorry. The motion was made by Commissioner Clare. It was seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes. Motion to receive the minutes.
I vote yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Coffey. Commissioner Coffey is unable to vote on Prime Gov, so it should be voice voting. All votes should be cast.
No. Can't vote either. I'm stuck on the full screen.
That's all right. Give me your voice vote. We're going to keep this party going.
Yes.
All votes now should be cast, and those minutes are received. Next item on the agenda today are continuance requests, and I believe we have four of the uncontested requests. Mr. Butler?
Yes, item 23, SPOUD 1320 deferred to July 8. Item 24, C 7310 deferred to July 8. Item 25, PC 10731 deferred to August 12. And item 26, PC 10726 has been withdrawn.
Those items appear on the screen up in front of us. If you wanted to be heard on any of those items today, they're about to be continued, so let me know. Otherwise, we're going to vote to continue them, to the items, to the dates that are shown. So unless there's discussion from commissioners, I'll take a motion on the uncontested continuance request.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the uncontested continuance request, as read.
I have a motion. I'll take the second on Prime Gov when someone's available to make it. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Coffey? Commissioner Coffey voted aye. Commissioner Privet?
Yes.
Yes.
All votes should be cast?
Mark.
Who? Oh. Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Did you vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. I seconded it, so I didn't vote.
All right. And those continuances are approved. Again, forgive us, we're getting back into the swing of being in here in person, so bear with us. We know what we're doing, I promise.[455.88][455.88](Laughter). Do we have any new continuance requests? I was not made aware of any before the meeting.
I'm not aware of any.
Mr. Groves, you have a new request for continuance?
I do. For the record, my name is Eric Groves. I'm an attorney. I represent a nearby landowner to the proposed project. That is item number B8, and it is PC 10741. It's an application to go from AA to R1. We ask for a continuance for several reasons. First of all, some of our clients could not be here today, and they would like to be here. Second, we would like an opportunity to circulate a protest petition. Third, we would like an opportunity for the neighbors to get organized and decide what they want to do. Fourth, David Box reached out to my client a few days ago and expressed a willingness to talk, and I would like that opportunity. So I left a message for David that I'd like a continuance, but I didn't hear back from him. So for those reasons and others, we'd like to pass it four weeks. I think that'll give us enough time to be organized and make a sensible presentation if we can agree on something.
Sure. I respect that. I think what I would say is, we tried to take a little different tact with these items that are requested for continuance before they're actually heard, since it's on the agenda today. There may be people who are present for that item and the applicants here, and I'd at least like the commission to be able to provide some feedback on the item before we continue it. So we can have that discussion, but I don't want to continue it before we hear it in turn.
Say again.
I don't want to continue it before we hear the item in turn. It's our first item, so.
Oh, oh, okay. All right.
Okay. Appreciate it. Any other items for continuance consideration? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda. There are seven items on today's consent agenda. Mr. Butler?
First item is KC 7306, final plat of Sarah Park, Section 2, located south of southwest 29th Street and east of South Sarah Road. Second item is KC 7307, final plat of Mustang Park, Section 2, located south of southwest 44th Street and west of South Mustang Road. Third item is KC 7308, final plat of Lincoln Industrial Park, located south of northwest 150th Street and east of North Lincoln Boulevard. Item four, KC 7309, final plat of Saratoga Phase 4, located south of northwest 23rd Street and east of North Sarah Road. Item five is KC 7311, final plat of Castleberry Villas, Section 3, located north of northwest 192nd Street and east of May Avenue. Six is KC 7313, final plat of Echo Park Phase 1, located north of northwest 150th Street and east of North MacArthur Boulevard. And item seven, SPOUD 1308, application to rezone 824 Northwest 68th Street from R1 to SPOUD 1308.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. I did have someone sign up that wanted to be heard on item number five. Kat Mock, are you present? Okay. I tell you what I'm going to do. You're here, opposition to the item. I'll just poll it, and we'll hear that item on the first part of today's agenda, okay? So let's remove item five from the consent agenda. Are there any other items at issue? I wish they were on your screen, but they're not, that Mr. Butler just read that are on our consent agenda. So we're voting on these items as a block because they're generally viewed as administrative in nature, but if you're here and you'd like to be heard on an item, I'd certainly love to hear from you. So anybody? Going once? Going twice? Any commissioners have comments on the consent agenda? Okay. If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the consent agenda as amended.
Yeah, just excluding item number five, and I'll take the second on Prime Gov when someone would like to make it.
Switch that.
I've got a motion and a second. That's good enough for me. Let's vote. Commissioner Coffey, how do you vote, ma'am?
Yes, please.
Thank you. All votes should be cast? Okay, and those applications, or those items are approved. So that brings us to items requiring separate vote, and our first item would be item number five. Is the applicant present with us today? This is a final plat for Castleberry Villas addition. Sorry, Jeff, I jumped over you.
And then there's a little eyeball.
Applicant with us? Please come forward and give us your name and address for the record.
I'm Preston Colwell with SMC. I am here on behalf of the applicant. We're the engineer. I'm here to answer any questions you guys may have.
Perfect. I don't have any questions. One thing I'll note before I ask Ms. Mock to come speak to us, this is a final plat. We are told in the staff report that the design of the final plaque informs of the subdivision regulations as they relate to subdivisions with 30 lots or less.
Or the.
The design also conforms to the R1ZL zoning district regulations and the approved preliminary plat, which were previously heard items before the commission. The zoning item went on to city council as well. So thank you very much for coming, and I'll have Ms. Mock come down and tell us what she wants us to hear about this item.
Good morning. My name is Kat Mock. I live at 19913 Forsyth Drive, Edmond, Oklahoma. So in essence, Castleberry Villas and Castleberry Addition are actually one neighborhood. We share one HOA. We share one set of resources. So at the current time, we have 267 landowners in our addition. Forty-three of these homes are still owned by Home Creations as they're building them to turnover. So that's 310 homes. With the additional plats you can see listed that they intend to have approved at a later date, we're going to be approximately 600 to 700 homes. My concern is that the amenities that were provided to this neighborhood are not going to be sufficient to have 700 households. Obviously, most households don't have one person living in it. You've got at least a family of three in the majority of the homes. We are, of course, a beginner-friendly neighborhood, so it's a lot of young children. We have a swimming pool. We have a clubhouse that contains a gym, and it's just not going to be sufficient to keep up with this many households.
Understood. I don't know how many of those items, because I don't have that information right in front of me, where they are in the process, if land has been rezoned, but it hasn't been preliminarily platted, or if it's been final-platted, or if it's got building permits that are actively being pulled to construct new homes. So you'll have to forgive me there.
I understand.
This item is for six lots that are a part of an existing development, and it's at the final plat phase. So I don't see anything before us today that would give me pause as the ward representative for it. I bet we're going to hear from you and a few other people again on another item today involving growth in the area, so I think those comments are probably appropriate at that point.
Yes, sir.
But I appreciate you coming down and sharing it with us.
Thank you.
If there's any questions from commissioners, I think we can take them now. If not, I'll take a motion on the item. As the ward representative, my recommendation would be that we make a motion to approve it.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve item C 7311.
I have a motion. I'll take that second on Prime Gov. Commissioner Coffey, how would you like to vote, ma'am?
Look like she's back up.
All votes should be cast. Yep. And that item is approved. Next item on the agenda is item number eight. Mr. Butler?
Item eight, PC 10741, application to rezone 10300 North Sooner Road from AA to R1.
Applicant? Yep.
Yes, Mason Schwartz, 522 Culcore Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is a property a little bit over 200 acres. That's a straight rezoning application from AA to R1, single-family. The property is at the northeast corner there of Sooner and Britton. It is surrounded by a single-family development to the north, to the east, and to the west. The comp plan designation is urban low, so we certainly feel that R1 is an appropriate zoning classification for that designation. Water is available to the property, public water, public sewer as well. There's actually a line that runs through the property as it is already, so both of those will be connected to. The staff report, as you know, recommends approval. It didn't see any negative comments in the staff report. There are folks obviously here to speak today. We've reviewed the protest letters. Mr. Box did have some back-and-forth correspondence with one of the gentlemen, and then he indicated that he had retained Mr. Groves. I think it was just a single person, as I understand it, that's retained Mr. Groves to represent him. But some of the issues that were raised in the protest letters were drainage, and then obviously asking for a continuance as well. I'd like to briefly address those. As the commission is aware, drainage is something that we certainly fully vetted at the plating construction stage. The necessary studies and analysis will be done to ensure that all the city's drainage and flood regulation ordinances are met. In terms of the continuance, we don't necessarily feel continuance is needed on this item today for a few reasons. At least, as I just said, one of the individuals is represented today by council, so although he couldn't be here, he's adequately represented. In addition, I would say that we have plenty of time before council. You know, if this gets recommended for approval to discuss with the neighbors, we certainly will. Reach out, have discussions, have meetings, whatever it takes, to discuss with them any kind of concerns that we can address. But I don't think those discussions in a two-week continuance will affect the underlying question for this commission, which is the compatibility of R1 zoning with the surrounding area and the surrounding zonings. And I think that the facts of this application, as the staff report, I think recognizes, is that R1 is an appropriate and compatible zoning designation for this property. So we would be happy to answer any questions or respond to any concerns that the neighbors may have, and we would ask for your approval.
Appreciate that. Before I turn it over to Commissioner Pennington, I'll just say, just kind of a point of note for you and the other people that are here, the continuance wouldn't be for two weeks because we don't meet again until July the 8th. So it would actually be a four-week continuance, which is one of the reasons why I wanted to make sure that we had a chance to hear it and discuss it as a group before we continued it, because of a long continuance time.
And to clarify, we don't think a continuance is necessary, but we're not going to sit here and demand a vote if this commission believes that it really is necessary for us to talk before making a decision. You know, we're willing to do that. We just, we don't think it's going to get us to a place where it changes the analysis of this application.
Understood. Commissioner Pennington, this is your word, sir, so I'll let you lead our discussion here.
Thank you. I think to start, to kind of set the stage just a little bit from fellow commissioners, we've been having this ongoing discussion about the level of density in some of these areas that have been kind of outside of the general urban core of Oklahoma City. And obviously, we're aware of the housing, the great housing demand that's going on in our city, at least for now. And so I think as far as the appropriateness of this level of density, I'd love to hear from the neighbors and hear specifically about their concerns, but I wanted to kind of frame the issue from that perspective of, you know, when we're talking about a development like this that already has sewer, that already has water, these are kinds of, the kinds of things that we generally do say, yeah, we're going to be ready to approve R1 for places. This is appropriate for development. But again, trying to be respectful of our neighbors who are represented by Mr. Groves, who moved out to this area for a certain lifestyle. And so how do we respect that and at the same time recognize the need for additional housing and the appropriateness of this kind of zoning in this area? So just wanted to frame that. I don't, I look forward to hearing from, from the neighbors about their more specific concerns about moving to R1 here.
Other questions of the applicant from commissioners on this? Okay, I just have, I have a couple, just for points of clarification while that map is up on the screen. PUD 1680 was a relatively recently approved PUD. I can't remember exactly when it came through. I know it's been within the last, like, 12, 18 months, something like that.
2018.
Yeah, okay. Time gets away from you. But I do remember that. What was the lot sizes within that PUD, and what other things were embedded in that PUD in terms of, like, setbacks and buffers and lot sizes and that sort of thing? Just refresh my recollection.
Sure. I think it was a little under 30,000 square foot lots. That's how the PUD application was submitted. The problem with that property when it came through was that it did not have sewer and water, and so it was not going to be appropriate for an R1 type of zoning. So it was a different situation than this, and so the application came through, they couldn't, under its existing zone, they couldn't get the lot sizes they want, so that's what the PUD specified. But it wasn't a situation where they wanted to come in with R1, and then it got negotiated and changed. I mean, it was always going to be the rural agriculture lot sizes because there was no sewer and water at the time.
So those are 30,000 square foot lots in 1680?
Yeah, approximately.
And then what about PUD 1009 and PUD 1391? Are those, what are the size of lots there?
Up there to the north are closer to what we're seeking. There are some, I was looking at some of them are 10,000 square foot. Some of them are down to, you know, less than quarter acre lots to those properties to the north up there south of Hefner Road. Now, that was all done a little bit further back. I think those were existing perhaps 2010 or even before that. But certainly, the stuff to the north is, is right in line with the type of single-family that would be considered under R1.
Got it. And just for the benefit of the public, you said those lots in 1391 are 10,000 square foot lots, but you're asking essentially for 6,000 square foot lots under R1. Is that correct?
Well, I don't want to specify exactly by the plugs. I was looking at it more from a plating standpoint, not with the zoning, but I know that some of the lots to the north, and I'm talking about probably PUD 1009 as well as PUD 690, those properties to the north, are a combination of lots that are anywhere between 6,000, 10,000, and perhaps more.
Okay. Okay. That's great. Any other questions? All right. If not, I do have a number of folks that are signed up to speak. Mr. Groves, since you're representing clients here, I'll let you go first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to urge a continuance, not simply because we want time to talk to the other side, but so that the neighbors can be organized. It's a very short period of time between notice and this hearing. My client is not here. We'd be ready to go on 8 July, but we need some time to get organized. The problems with this request are obvious. It's incompatible with surrounding zoning. I think on 1680, the underlying is RA. You know, if they came on with a PUD where we could negotiate design, we'd be willing to do so. If they had brought their preliminary plat at the same time as this request, that would give us an opportunity to negotiate design. But these things did not occur. If they get a recommendation for R1, they're going to have a lot of leverage by the time we get to the city council. So we, we want a recommendation from the planning commission that's well-considered, and we're just not in a position to do that today. You know, people within 300 feet receive notice and get an opportunity to be heard for a reason, and that's because, as Commissioner Pennington said, some of them are very heavily invested in this area. We've got AA to the south, AA to the southwest, AA to the west, RA to the east. I think this needs to be carefully considered, and we would like to present a good case, so I don't think the applicant has much to lose by putting this over until 8 July and maybe everything to gain. Maybe we can talk them into doing something a little different. But if they get straight R1, and there's a reason why they're asking for straight R1, doesn't really leave us any room to negotiate, so. But we think that would be ill-advised in this case and.
Well, let us, let us take up that piece of the discussion, because I think we need to have that discussion as a commission before we talk about the merits of that.
Right.
But I'm kind of curious for commissioner feedback on whether or not a PUD is supported by the commission here, or R1 zoning is essentially supported by the commission. I'm not saying we're taking action in that regard yet, but I'm just, I kind of would love to hear what the commissioners think in that sense, because if we're going to continue it, I think it would be really unreasonable of us, for the benefit of the applicant, quite frankly, to continue it for a month, only to come back and then continue it again to put it in a PUD, and, you know, that continues in another month. That's an unreasonable delay, in my view, given the nature of the underlying application. So any commissioners have feedback they want to provide? Commissioner Pennington, do you have feedback?
I think I'll defer to Commissioner Highsmith first.
Okay. Commissioner Highsmith?
All, all I was going to say, oh, man. Sorry, guys.
Welcome back.
Yeah, still getting used to this. I don't even know if this is a worthwhile comment, so I apologize in advance. But, you know, as part of our zoning code review, one of the things that we've been talking about quite a bit is, you know, the fact that PUDs and spuds, although negotiated, do present a problem long-term for the city. We can't redefine what happens in these spot zonings as a group of citizens, right? They're kind of like, they're kind of imprinted forever. But a base zoning, as the city grows and changes and the views of its citizens might shift over time, the redefining of each of those individual categories is very doable. And I think, at least in my point of view from, from the commission, that that is a massive positive, actually, in the end, for, for most citizens. Unfortunately, we haven't finished that effort, and so that's not necessarily, you know, completely true that you guys have better options just yet. But I'm always thinking about the future of, of, you know, the city and the things that we have to deal with as a commission and just, you know, as fellow citizens of each other. So I guess, like I said, it's, it's not 100% germane yet, but I'm, I'm trying to lay the foundation for what happens, you know, soon and moving forward. That would be my one hesitation. Right now, I really like base zoning because that effort, that means that that effort's going to pay off more, and we've already recognized as a commission, through that effort, that we've got a problem. We're addicted to spuds and PUDs, and there is an issue moving forward. So that's all the context I've got, and, and those are my thoughts. I don't know what that means for a vote today, but I'll, I'll defer to my fellow commissioners.
Anybody else have comments on that?
Mr. Chairman, and I, (laugh) I, I'm not sure I could disagree more with that context.
Not everybody agrees.
You know, the question of whether Oklahoma City uses PUDs and spuds too much is a question that the Code Update Committee is looking into and dealing with, and that will be sorted out through that process. And I don't think there's any indication that they're going to be done away with, and certainly not anytime soon. We are where we are. This is a piece of ground that has some challenges to it. There are neighbors in the area who want to be heard. I think it would be advisable for the applicant to take a hard look at whether they wouldn't be better off with a PUD, and I absolutely am in favor of taking the time for them to meet with the neighbors and sort that out.
Okay. Anybody else have comments? I'm going to let the applicant respond just before we have a discussion on the continuance. Mr. Schwartz, if you want to give us your thoughts on that.
Just on that point, so, you know, rehash. As you guys know, you know, when, when developers can come in with a preliminary plat and a plan and a PUD, then a lot of times it does satisfy neighbors, and you make commitments, and you know what you're going to do. Obviously, that creates other concerns, perhaps, of pigeonholing. But the reality is, in this case, is like many zoning cases, where you have the zoning getting put into place, and you don't know exactly what's going to be designed. And so to come in with a PUD right now and try to limit densities and make specific commitments without having done all the engineering studies and doing the other things that need to come later on in the process, I think would be premature here. I'm not sure how much usefulness it could serve for this case, because we just don't know exactly what's going to be designed there, especially with some of the challenges of the property and with the drainage and all that. And those are things that are going to have to be designed at a later stage, and so to just make commitments now and today about it, or to go through a PUD process, I think would be very challenging. Otherwise, we certainly would have recommended that we submitted a PUD if we knew more details about it.
I think that's the risk that you're getting ready to run is if you take the continuance, you're going to have to refile and renotice if you want to, if you end up moving in that, in that direction. If you don't, you're going to wind up coming back and obviously it's going to get pushed out, you know, further. So we can let you make that decision. I don't want to speak for any commissioners, but I'm certainly getting the sense that there's a preference for a continuance. If somebody disagrees with that strongly, this would be the time to speak up and say so. But I'm getting that feeling from the vibe here that that's where this is headed, so...
If, like I said, we're not going to demand a vote if the commission thinks it's best to continue it and, and talk about it. I just wanted to be clear and upfront that there's, you know, there's only so much room to negotiate details here. A, because it's a straight zoning application, but B, because even if we came back with the PUD, I'm not sure how much we could really commit to at the moment.
Understood. Well, it...
So, but we, like I said, if continuance is necessary, we're certainly willing to push it off.
Just a quick comment. The, a lot can be done with the plat, and I, I think that the, the commission maybe underutilizes the plat process. I mean, we can influence the compatibility with surrounding developments, the lot sizes, you know, all the variation within, within a plat can be done through the plating process. So just, just kind of a plug for, you know, don't underestimate the, and maybe we don't typically do that. We do a lot of negotiating PUDs, and maybe we've, you know, the pendulum has swung a little too far that way, in my opinion, because a lot of that can be done in the plating process. So just, just some food for thought there.
And I would say that this is the kind of application that is really the ideal application to do that, when you don't have a PUD and you're, you're going under a plat under a straight zoning is, I think, even more important at the plating stage to look at those details.
Yep.
Yeah, I think, I, I think that is a very valid point, and it's actually one that was raised by the, by Mr. Groves, that if they choose to do that and bring those forward at the same time, that process of negotiation can play out there. But if you hand somebody a straight R1 zoning, you've completely, you know, removed any incentive they have to negotiate their PUD, so I, their plat. So, you know, if, if they want to move in that direction, I, I think, you know, there shouldn't be quite so much presupposition about what's going to come out of these meetings with the neighbors, thinking, you know, it's important to go, to listen, and to see, you know, if there's a path to address those issues. You know, maybe it's a PUD, maybe it's bringing the plat forward now, so...
Sure. And to be clear, even if we, continuance or not, I mean, before city council, we have every intent to meet with the neighbors and do everything we can to obviously resolve as many concerns as possible, so.
My only concern, and I don't know if this is Dan, if you're the appropriate person or Jeff with, with my comments on this, because yes, we've got Mason at the podium right now, but let us approve this R1 today and let Mr. Box come back with that plat, and we'll be, he'll be arguing about us denying the rights of his client to do what he wants, what we've approved with the zoning. So my fear is constantly that we give away our authority at the zoning stage, and then we have to comply at the plating stage with the request of, of the developer. And I'm picking on David, but, but still, you all know that that's exactly what's going to happen.
Well, it, it sounds like Jeff's saying that we have more latitude during that process, and maybe we need a, a study session just for that. But today, I mean, for this question, I, I don't want to come off wrong. I actually do support the continuance here. It does sound like, you know, I, I understand the want or the desire to organize the neighborhood. I understand how that's not necessarily beneficial as a developer for an organized neighborhood, but, right, that's, that's kind of why we're here to goaltend a little bit, make sure that those things happen the right way. I support the continuance. My, my discussion earlier on the zoning stuff, you know, that's neither here nor there, really.
I, I support the continuance too, just from the standpoint that there was a flood of things that came in at the last minute. People clearly wanted to talk about it. We don't have a policy where we just rush things through because, you know, we want to move it along when there's people who clearly want to be heard on it. I think it represents an opportunity to discuss it. Along those lines, though, I will tell you, so that neighbors, Mr. Groves, your client has a benefit, I am supportive of this application, and I just want to say that in general terms, this is a perfectly appropriate area for single-family housing. There are some compatibility discussions, I think, that could be had about these lots versus what's next door and adjacent, and, and, you know, there are things that we institute all the time as ways to combat, you know, the big differential between lot, and the code identifies those things. So I understand the, the discussion around whether or not we should have a PUD or we shouldn't, but the continuance seems appropriate to give time to talk. But I also think that it's fair of us to give feedback as to where we stand generally. And generally, I'm supportive of the application. I don't know if anybody else wants to at least provide some feedback to aid neighbor and applicant discussions, but when it comes back forward, I'm going to be generally supportive. I'm a little leery of the straight R1, 6,000 square foot, let the code do the work on separation. I think that's a little bit much for me, but any other comments?
Yeah, and I know I'm, I'm going to make the motion as well for the continuance because I, I support the continuance as well, but I, I agree with, with the point that either the plat or a PUD is going to be the appropriate way, in my opinion, to do it. I, I don't feel comfortable with just straight R1, given the comments that we've heard, given the issues that we know, the, the lifestyle, again, that, that people who are living in this area are accustomed to making. I, I would prefer that, but I think it's something that could be fixed with the plat or the PUD, so.
Fair enough.
Last thing I'll throw in is I think this is a good example of why the summer schedule is not necessarily, I know, I know I'm going to get like tomatoes thrown at me here, but again, you know, we can, we can lose, we can lose a commissioner from here, you know, here and there, and still have a quorum and not force applicants to wait a month just in the summer, which to me is kind of, I don't know.
Understood. If there's no further discussion, I think what I'll do is just ask if there's any neighbors or folks that came down here today that want to be heard on the continuance aspect of this, because that's clearly where we're headed. If there's anybody who objects to that or has something they want to interject regarding the continuance, if not, I think we're going to continue it to the July 8 meeting, is what it sounds like to me. So seeing no objection to that or discussion on it, Commissioner Pennington, if you're prepared to make the motion, I think it's, we're ready for it.
Yes, sir. I move we continue PC 10741 until the July 8 meeting.
Okay, I have a motion. I'll take the second on Prime Gov when that's available. Motion's been seconded by Commissioner Coffey. Please cast your votes. And Commissioner Coffey, how do you vote, ma'am? Oh, great, okay. We're all on now. And that continuance to July the 8th has been approved. So thank you very much. Next item on the agenda today is item number nine. Ms. Butler?
This is SPD 1321, application to rezone 8405 South Pennsylvania Avenue from SPD 301 to SPD 1321.
Mr. Schwartz, you're back up.
It's me again. Unaware of any protest on this one, again, Mason Schwartz, 522 Holkwood Drive. It is a rezoning change from an existing SPUD to a new SPUD with really the salient changes being the allowance of the retail use unit. There's an existing building on the property. I believe it's got an electronics store on it, but the owner, I guess, would like to operate the retail use unit. And unaware of any protests, staff recommends approval, I think with a TE, which we are willing to accept, and we would ask for your approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schwartz. Commissioner Hinkle, this is your ward. Sir, do you have comments on this one?
It's an appropriate use for this area. I just want to make sure there's no gas station going in there. I mean, there's no fuel, sewer, that weird little parking lot on the side could have a...
No gas station.
All right, no, I'm, I'm fine with it.
It wouldn't be allowed?
That's what I thought. I was just double checking to make sure.
Is there anybody here that wanted to be heard on this item today, SPD 1321? Seeing nobody, if there's no further discussion from commissioners, Commissioner Hinkle, I think we're ready for a motion if you want to make it, sir.
I move to approve SPUD 1321.
I have a motion. I'll take a second on Prime Gov when someone can make it. Motion's been seconded, so I have a motion to second to recommend approval to city council on SPD 1321. Please cast your votes. Asa?
All right.
Give it the program, Asa.
I opened something up and now, I, it, I vote yea. I, I think I got to wait this...
Fisher Highsmith has voted in the affirmative. All votes have been cast, and that application is approved.
Thank you.
Excellent, yeah, thank you. Next item on the agenda today is item number 10. Mr. Butler?
This is case PUD SP 674E, application for a specific plan pursuant to approval of PUD 1674, located at 3540 East Hefner Road.
Is the applicant with us today? Mr. Zidzo? It's all you, man. Somebody.
Good afternoon. Mark sits out with Johnson and Associates, 1 East Sheridan Avenue, Suite 200. This is a specific plan for an industrial park that we rezoned several years back in the northeast part of town. The staff recommends approval that's consistent with the PUD. This is for a continued phase developing much smaller industrial buildings than I think what the PUD envisioned, but all the architectural materials and everything else is consistent with the PUD, so we'd ask for your approval.
Thank you very much. I'll just note, for the purposes of the record, that staff's review of the specific plan for the development indicates that the proposal is consistent with the technical requirements of PUD 1674, the master design statement and the master development plan. With that, Commissioner Pennington, this is your ward. Do you have any questions or concerns on the specific plan?
No questions or concerns.
Any other concerns from commissioners? Is there anybody who wanted to be heard on this item today? I see no one, so if there's no discussion, I'll take a motion from Commissioner Pennington when you're ready to make it, sir.
I move approval of item 10.
I have a motion to approve the specific plan for PUD SP 1674E, which has been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes when available. And that item is approved.
Thank you.
You bet. Next item on today's agenda is item number 11.
11 is case CE 1051, application to close 603 feet of Styles Avenue, Styles Circle, north of Northwest 8th Street and south of Northwest 9th Street.
Good afternoon. Tim Johnson here on behalf of the applicants. This is a item we continued from the last meeting so that we could take the time to spend with the staff to go over the details of this. It's a complicated street closure. It involves the Alliance of Oklahoma City, as well as the developer of the innovation building you've seen on the news and in the paper, as well as the, the Oklahoma Department of Commerce, who has sent a support letter because they could not authorize us to represent them. And so what you have before you is an effort to close Styles Circle and Styles Avenue that will allow development of underground parking that will take up that existing right of way. The underground parking garage will take access where Styles comes into the site now. And then all that area will be put together into one piece of property that has a three-level underground parking structure that will also be under a portion of Styles Park. And the negotiations and discussions with the, the use under the Styles Park will be put together in agreement with the Parks Department where the developer of this property will ultimately take, take over the maintenance of the Styles Park in perpetuity. So we've met with the staff, we've met with several of the council members that had some concerns about this initially when the application was made, and I think everybody's satisfied. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Pennington, you're busy the first part of this meeting. This is in your ward too, sir. Do you want to lead our discussion here?
Lot going on in Ward 7, that's a good thing. I have met with the applicant about this. I think it's a great idea, and I'm, I'm in support.
Okay. Any other comments on this from commissioners or concerns? There are two TEs in the staff report. Did you say you're in agreement with those, and I missed it?
Thank you for bringing that up. Yes, we, we agree with both of them, and we will submit a meets and bounds legal for the pedestrian access on Styles between now and council. There's some shifting of the development on the surface right now, so we should have that established prior to the council meeting, and we'll submit it to the staff.
Understood. Is there anybody that wanted to be heard on this item today, CE 1051? Seeing nobody, if there's no further discussion from commissioners on the item, Commissioner Pennington, I'll take the motion if you'd like to make it, sir.
I move that we approve CE 1051.
I have a motion to recommend approval to city council on CE 1051, which has been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes when available. All votes should be cast. And that item is approved. Next item on the agenda today is item number 12. Mr. Butler?
Item 12 is case PC 10739, application to rezone 8200 Southwest 74th Street from I2 to R2.
Good afternoon. Mark Grubbs, 1800 South Sarah Road, on behalf of the applicant. What you have before you is an R2 application. It's in performance with the comp plan and has support of staff that has a companion item of preliminary plat following this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Grubbs. Commissioner Coffey, this is in your ward, ma'am. Would you like to lead our discussion here?
No, I have talked with the applicant regarding this application. It's fairly straightforward. There are no technical evaluations. I have had no comments or concerns from the neighbors and am supportive of the application.
Thank you, Commissioner Coffey. Is there anybody here that wants to be heard on this item today, PC 10739? Seeing nobody, do any commissioners have comment on this?
Okay, I move approval of PC 10739.
I have a, a motion, I'll take the second on Prime Gov if somebody'd like to make it, to recommend approval to city council on PC 10739. Motion's been seconded by Commissioner Highsmith. Please cast your votes when available. All votes should be cast. And that item is approved. Next item is item 13. Mr. Butler, this is the companion preliminary plat.
This is case number CE 7314, preliminary plat of Red Bud Villas, located south of, northwest 74th Street and west of South Council Road.
Thank you. I'll just note that the design of the preliminary plat conforms with the subdivision regulations as they relate to subdivisions with 30 lots or less, and it conforms apparently with the zoning we just approved. So if there's no discussion on this from other commissioners, and Commissioner Coffey, you don't have any comments on the plat, I'll take a motion since no one asked to speak on the zoning item.
There is some discussion on the technical evaluations. Mr. Grubbs, would you like to address those? On the TEs?
I, I agree with the TEs on this.
Okay.
On the, on, on the following item, there's just one comment on TE4. That TE seems to be pretty standard on both comments. When a creek comes into play there and you can't meet ADA standards currently crossing a creek or something, that we would ask to pay a fee in lieu of for that portion up to the creek. But on this one, I agree with the TEs, and I'll just, I'll, I'll make a suggestion on the following item that, for some verbiage for TE4 on the following item.
Okay, so you're okay with TE4?
There is not a creek on this one.
You're saying TE4, but you mean TE3, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's TE4 on the following.
Got it.
I'm sorry. I got TE4 on the...
You're fine.
Okay.
But you're, you're good with it as it stands on this item?
I'm good with it as stated, yes.
Great. I think we're ready for you, Commissioner Coffey.
Okay. All right. If there are no comments then on this one, I move approval of CE 7314.
And for the benefit of the public, since this is a preliminary plat, this would be a final action which does not go to city council, so this is a motion to approve the preliminary plat. I'll take a second on Prime Gov. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. A motion to second to approve the preliminary plat for CE 7314. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that item is approved. Next item on the agenda today is item 14. Mr. Butler?
This is case 10740, application to rezone 9101 North Overholser Drive from AA to RA.
Applicant with us? Is that you, Mr. Grubbs? No?
Oh. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name's Dwight Butler with Anchor Engineering for the applicant. We have no TEs. I would just happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Commissioner Clare, this is your ward, sir. Do you have comments or questions on this one?
I do not, so I'm ready to support the application, ready to make a motion if there's no further comment.
Okay. Let's ask first if there's anybody here from the public that wants to be heard on this item, PC 10740. I don't see anybody, but it sounds like Commissioner Pennington, did you have a comment you wanted to make? No? Oh, okay. Anybody else have comments? Commissioner Clare, I think we're ready.
All right. I'll move approval of item PC 10740.
I have a motion to recommend approval to city council on PC 10740, which has been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. And that application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda today is item 15. Mr. Butler.
This is PC 10742, application to rezone 11701 Southwest 29th Street from AA to R-1.
Mr. Grubbs, you're back.
Mark Grubbs, on behalf of the applicant, this is a straight R-1 zoning case. It is in conformance with the comp plan and has support of staff, and I would be happy to, it has the following companion preliminary plat, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Coffey, this is your ward again, ma'am. If you want to lead our discussion.
Yes, we, Mr. Grubbs and I have talked about this application. Again, I have no concerns from the surrounding neighborhood, and I'm supportive of the application.
And this is the one that, oh, that's next item, sorry.
No TEs on this one?
I'm all over the place today.
It's all right. We're here for you.
Okay. And you have some suggestions as it relates to technical evaluation number four.
They're not on this item. This item is free of technical evaluations.
Yeah, it's on the companion preliminary plat.
Don't let Mr. Grubbs drag you into his road of confusion. Is there anybody that wants to be heard on this item today? Okay, if not, and there's no discussion from commissioners on it, Commissioner Coffey, I'll take a motion if you want to make it, ma'am.
Okay. I move approval of PC 10742, 2.
I have a motion to approve or recommend approval to city council on PC 10742. It's been seconded by Commissioner Highsmith. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. And that item is approved. Next item on the agenda is item 16. It's the companion item, I think.
Yes, this is case CE 7312, preliminary plat of Fireside Creek, located north of Southwest 29th Street and west of South Mustang Road.
Mark Grubbs, on behalf of the applicant, this companion preliminary plat item, we agreed to all the TEs. I would just have one recommendation on TE number four, that that TE be rewarded to say the developer will be responsible for constructing a sidewalk along Southwest 29th Street and along all common areas adjacent to right-of-way. With exception for across creeks and/or drainage areas where the terrain does not permit construction of a sidewalk to ADA standards, the developer shall pay the current city OKC's fee in lieu of sidewalk rate for that portion of the sidewalk that is unable to be constructed across creeks and/or drainage areas along Southwest 29th Street.
Excellent. Any objection to that amended TE language from staff? Good with that, JJ? Okay. So we'll just use that as the amended TE4 language, as you've read into the record, to preserve for the purposes of making a motion, should we choose to do that today, as amended TE4? Commissioner Coffey?
Okay. I think, I think staff and Mr. Grubbs and I are all in agreement with that, so unless there are objections, I recommend approval of CE 7312, in agreement with technical amendments 1, 2, 3, and 5, amending technical evaluation number 4. To read, the developer will be responsible for constructing a sidewalk along Southwest 29th Street and along all common areas, with the exception of across creeks and/or drainage areas where the terrain does not permit construction of sidewalks to ADA standards. The developer agrees to pay the city of Oklahoma City a fee in lieu of sidewalk that is unable to be constructed across the creek and/or drainage areas along Southwest 29th Street.
You don't even know what item you're on, and she just reread TE4. That's incredible.
We're on the same wavelength.
Oh, okay. I have a motion to approve the preliminary plat as amended, CE 7312. I'll take a second if someone would like to make that on Prime Gov when that's available I have a motion and a second, but I don't have anything on my screen, so I'm not sure what's going on. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. I will vote in the affirmative.
Thanks for being my support group today.
You're welcome. My screen's not working, but that's okay. I'll wing it. Item 17.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to be recusing myself from this item.
Yeah, thank you very much. I don't, is that door still locked? Are we permitted back there now?
I think it's unlocked.
Check that door, and if not, we'll provide-
Last Thursday, it was unlocked. Nope.
Mike? We'll provide Commissioner Clare just a minute to exit since he's recusing himself from While he walks out, I'm going to refresh my screen.
Okay.
Item 17, case number DA 26416, application for a consideration of a lot split deed approval,
located at 1631 Northwest 21st Street and a variance to section 3.4.4(c)(2f) of the subdivision regulations.
I'm Scott Loper. I'm available for any questions that you guys have about this. The request is so that we can market the individual units, fee simple, for homeowners instead of having it as a rental unit.
Got it. Did you say, how did you pronounce your last name, sir? I'm sorry.
Loper.
Loper. Mr. Loper, what's your address for the record, please?
1388 Auburn Court, Piedmont, Oklahoma.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Highsmith, this is your ward. Do you have questions or concerns on this one?
I'm surprised that it took this long to get the lot split, lots splits coming through, but it was my understanding this was always the plan. I don't know if everybody was here when we rezoned this initially, but it wasn't that long ago. I followed the pace of construction during quarantine. I would have liked it to go faster, and I'm sure you would have too.
Absolutely.
I'm glad to see them getting close. I'm looking forward to seeing trees down that sidewalk area, though, but otherwise, I think to me is pretty clear-cut, and look to my fellow commissioners for any further comments before making a motion.
Okay. I just have one question. My staff report indicates that the minimum lot size is 850 square feet. I find that extraordinarily hard to believe. What is the square footage of each of the lots?
Right about that.
It is 850 square feet?
Yes.
What's going, what's going on? What's being built on 850 square feet?
It's already built. They're townhomes.
Oh, okay. That's right. That's right. Okay. I do remember that now.
These are three-story.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I'm sorry.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we do, and it's hard to tell on your, on your document here, but did we do a common area down the back for the drive? Or is that an easement? Or maybe it's neither?
There is.
Yeah, okay. I think partially, you know, they have a common area drive or a common drive, I guess. And I thought maybe that was what ate into a little bit of the square footage, but-
Oh, okay.
I don't really have anything in my documents here that tell me.
Got it. Anybody here from the public that wants to be heard on this item? This is a lot split deed approval, DA 26416. Seeing nobody? Any comments from commissioners? Seeing none? Commissioner Highsmith, we'll take a motion if you'd like to make it.
I make a motion to, is this, do we make, do we have final approval on this?
No.
No, this goes to city council?
It does. This is an advisory.
Dan's shaking his head now.
Oh, no, it is. Oh, you're right. I'm sorry. No, this is a final action. My fault.
Well, then, I make a motion to approve item DA 26416.
I have a motion. My screen's back, which is good news. I have a motion to approve DA 26416. I'll take the second when it's available.
Got to move.
Anybody? Let's do it by voice. We'll figure it out.
Second.
Wait a minute. It's going crazy.
Dan's got it.
I have a second from Commissioner Privet. The motion was made by Commissioner Highsmith. The second was made by Commissioner Privet to approve DA 26416. Please cast your votes. There it is. All votes should be cast, and that application is appro, you know what? Yeah, it's a, wait a minute. Did we take one for the variance? We need to take the variance. That's on me. So Commissioner Clare, give us just a minute. I'm psyching everybody out. So I need a motion on the variance to section-
Mr. Chairman, isn't the item itself is the variance, is it?
Well, but I've got a TE requesting the variance, so I think we need to take the variance in turn, and then we need to take the item as a lot split deed approval. So I messed that up. That's on me. Let's make the motion for the variance to section 3.4.4(c)(2f) of the subdivision regulations if we can.
Okay. I need to remake the motion. I make a motion to approve the variance request to section 3.4.4(c)(2f) of the subdivision regulations in reference to this project.
Mr. Grubbs is impacting even me. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your vote on the variance. All votes should be cast. And the variance is approved. Now let's make a motion on the item, and we can move on.
While that works, I make a motion to approve item DA 26416.
Take the second on Prime Gov. That's been seconded. Please cast your votes when available. All votes should be cast. And despite my best efforts to mess it up, DA 26416 has been approved. Now we're ready for item 18. Mr. Butler?
This is PUD 1817, application to rezone 19301 North Pennsylvania Avenue from PUD 1225 to PUD 1817.
Applicant with us?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. Steve Rollins, ARC Engineering Consultants, 135 Deer Creek Road, representing the applicant. This item was continued from the May 13th meeting. In that meeting, there were several issues and concerns brought up by the commissioners, including identifying the boundary tracks. As you can see by the drawing that was just brought up, we've divided that into about an acre and a half of C3 at the hard corner and four and a half acres of R4 surrounding it, and those are net acreages. We were also asked to look at the buffer between those two uses. Within the PUD, we have 10-foot of building limit line all along the, inside the C3 use and 10-foot along the R4, so that's 20-foot of total separation between the two uses. Landscaping within the PUD is just according to code. We were also asked to strike several of the C3 use units that were not appropriate for the area. We've done that. We also met with the neighbors last Thursday. Felt like we had a good meeting. There were 20 to 25 people there representing five different neighborhoods from the area. We discussed a lot of their concerns that were talked about in the last planning commission meeting, including them, less residential, more commercial development, traffic, overcrowding of the schools, crime from apartments, things like that. We also discussed that, you know, if this were to be approved by the, by the city, what could make this more appealing to them? Some of the things and suggestions that they, that they had included, if these were to be apartments, safety being a top concern, addressing those with good layout, good lighting, fencing, sidewalks, things like that, and also making them a higher-end, nicer apartments. We feel like we've addressed a lot of these concerns within the revised PUD that you have. We feel like the R4 is a good fit for the area and that it is needed and in demand. If there is any other discussion or questions, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Appreciate it, Mr. Rollins. This is in my words, I'll kind of kick the discussion off. Just for the other commissioners' benefit, I did have some legal ex parte communications on this item, and Mr. Rollins was sort of articulating some of that discussion. Based on the applications that came forward last time, as a reminder, it was one track that was going to be either C3 or R4 in its entirety. I asked Mr. Rollins to define the two tracks so that we could discuss any kind of compatibility issues we needed to between the commercial tract and the, and the R4 apartment tract. That was something that, regardless of what we do with the item, we need to be able to have that discussion, and so I wanted to make sure he defined that. He's done that. That's on the screen in front of you. We also talked about some use units. What Mr. Rollins did here is he took all the C3 units and then he prohibited some uses. The uses that he and I talked about that we added into the PUD language, and so if someone could assist me just in the event that we need to make a motion, 8300.44, which is funeral and term and undertaking, was also struck, or added as a prohibited use in this case. 8150.6.5 hoop house, 8150.6.3 greenhouse, and 8300.65 pawn shops, retail pawn shops, were all, I asked him to include those as prohibited uses. One of the reasons why I asked him to include those as prohibited uses is this is the hard corner of 192nd and Penn. So additionally, he knows that outdoor sales and displays not permitted. He's added language which wasn't in the previous application to limit the uses that involve either a fast food drive-through window or a drive-through speaker or gasoline sales, which also now apparently come equipped with drive-throughs. 150 feet, he and I had a discussion about that. He originally wrote it, and in your application, it says, as a residential building, he's agreed to alter that to be a residential use with the idea there that we're really limiting it. You know, we had that long discussion a couple meetings ago about the Sonic Drive-In back at the neighborhood, and I explained that to him and shared those comments as well. So that was something that he and I discussed offline. One thing I do want to point out that I misunderstood when I looked at the application until it was explained to me by Mr. Rollins, was that there's in fact, what he's written in between the two tracks is a 20-foot buffer, and the way he wrote it, it just wasn't immediately apparent to me. Maybe that was just me, but it's 10 feet along the north and west boundaries in tract A and 10 feet along tract A's boundary, so a total of a 20-foot buffer between those. And one of the things that I wanted some feedback on from other commissioners, because Mr. Rollins and I had a discussion about it, and we didn't really settle this item before the hearing, was just what landscaping and screening would be appropriate to require there. Code, you know, is one thing. We've changed that in the past. I think we should probably have that discussion. But those are the major issues that I talked about. Another issue that I talked about with him was an architectural restriction, which is not about aesthetics. In my view, it's about safety and awareness, which is that EFS is not an insured product. I've had this conversation before. I asked for 70% to be masonry and hard products and 30% be limited to EFS. You come back and ask for 60 and 40 split for the apartment, so we need to talk about that. The commercial tract, he's agreed to the 70/30 on. One other clarification point for commissioners on the signage. I asked him to combine 12.4 and 12.5. I just noticed that these two things seem to, they should just be one note, which is that any of these signs that are less than eight square feet are going to be considered incidental. He's also limited the signage to what would be two, two signs. Under freestanding signs in the section 12, there should be two signs in this PUD, and he's asked for 12 feet in height, 125 square feet for those two signs. Am I missing anything that I, we discussed that I want to make sure the public knows we discussed and that my fellow commissioners know we discussed?
Dumpsters, instead of sand, 6 to 8-foot high fence, sufficient height to cover it.
Yeah. He included language that said 6 to 8 feet. There's some standard language we usually see that just says screening to a sufficient height. I asked him to change that language, which staff can provide him. Anything else?
I think that's it.
And 50 feet, which you already, you'd already included at 50 feet. So before I ask for folks that are, that want to be heard on this item in terms of opposition, any questions from commissioners of the applicant?
Yeah. Could you talk to us about the use units one more time to make sure I've got the additional use units that are being eliminated, prohibited in 8.2.3?
You got it.
And then, do you have a recommendation on the landscape buffer as far as-
My thought is, is that I want to give a future apartment dweller the same luxury we would give a future, you know, single-family residential dwelling, so we don't know what that 1.4-acre corner site is going to be. I think is, I didn't look, I should have looked to see where gas stations were located proximity to the site, but that's screaming for one, given the size of it. So that's a fairly incompatible use with the residential, so I think we should be protective of the residential if we're going to allow that. You know, I would argue for a pretty, what we would consider as an aggressive landscaping requirement, just, just to try to provide that, that buffer. And then screening, you know, I think we should talk about that, too. I don't necessarily have a preference, except that I think it should be pretty-
Completely agree, though. But the use units prohibited one more time?
Use units were 8300.44, that's funeral and in tournament undertaking, 8150.6.5, which is hoop house. Bonus points if any of you in the audience knows what a hoop house is. 8150.6.3 greenhouse and 8300.65, which is pawn shops. And I can read all this as proposed TEs if we get there, but, okay. So no other questions of the applicant? Okay. If there's not, I do have some people that want to be heard on this. First person I've got a sheet in front of me on is Elizabeth Miranda. Ms. Miranda, are you with us?
Hello, commissioners. My name's Elizabeth Miranda. I spoke the last time at the May 13th meeting. I'm here representing some of the neighbors in the back that are here, but also the ones that couldn't make it today. These are neighbors from neighborhoods of Lasenada, Mahollen, Thornhill, Castleberry, although we do have another person who will speak from Castleberry, Skyler's Court. We were at the meeting with Mr. Rollins, and at the last planning commission, Commissioner Pennington requested that Mr. Rollins give the neighbors a clear site plan, with the intention of giving the neighbors a clear understanding of what his plans are, or the plans of the developer. However, the information received was very vague. He explained very little about the future plans of the property. The one piece of information we gained was that the specific, was just that specific acreage, that's, that's all we got. In fact, when he, when people questioned what an R4 was, he said, "Well, it doesn't really matter, even though it says an R4." He said, "You know, we could put R1s in there, you know, it could be single-family behind there." So he wasn't even specific that it would be apartments when we asked. Townhouses, we asked, "What, what is it going to be, what is it going to look like?" And he said, "I don't know, developer doesn't know." And we said, "Is it, is the property for sale?" Because it says it's for sale online for 2.5 million. He's like, "Well, you know, every developer puts a sign on the property when they get it, you know, it's just, it's just a normal thing commercial property owners do." But he doesn't know if he's going to sell it. So, we had a lot of concerns when we left the meeting. We didn't know what's going to happen, we didn't know anything about the retail, we didn't know anything about the residential that's going in, and so we left with a lot of questions. It was not clear to us, it's still not clear to us, what's going in there, if it's going to be developed by the owner, or if it's going to be sold, and then who knows what happens to it at that point, even though there's promises or things being said now, we don't know what's going to happen to it. So, that was our big concern, and we want to make sure that the commission heard that part of it, because we were, we were really pretty upset. So, I also received a, a letter today, actually, from, I don't know if you can see it up there, there is a, a couple of farms that are just south of the property.
We did receive that letter you're referencing.
All right, so, I mean, the big idea is this, I don't want to have to, I know you guys can read really well, but it's got, it has so many great things in here. So this farm, it's Cross Creek Farm, it's located at the southwest corner of northwest 192nd Street and North Pennsylvania Avenue. The farm has been here way before anything was developed, when it was all agriculture. But this owner is also aware of some agreement that had happened between the, approximately 15 years ago, the current developer purchased the northwest corner from the previous farm owner. In agreement with that owner, the property was rezoned to a combination of storage, retail, and multifamily. That plan was a balanced use of the property. So, it was supposed to have the commercial, the R4, you know, and, you know, and some, you know, just, just equal use. Now the developer returns seeking to throw, throughout the use of this property balance. Denying the proposed expansion of R4 on this property does not deny that the developer the opportunity to build apartments. It has done so in accordance with the original PUD. It simply denies expansion of the R4. This area already has its piece of an, of an apartment pie. There is 341 units in the southeast corner of May and northwest 192nd. The previously zoned 200 units just off the corner, so it goes on, there's 600 units basically in one square mile. We respectfully disagree with the staff's recommended approval of PUD 1817. It appears staff is reviewing the area historically, and/or not considering the impact of the approved, but yet not built, developed in the, but yet not built, development in the area. Further, there is lack of police presence in this area. You have to go all the way down to Hefner to get police to head out our way. We're on the very edge of Oklahoma County, and Oklahoma City, and Edmond. Further, there is lack, sorry. Apartments often bring a higher rate of crime, and over in Thornhill just recently, there's four houses that are under construction on Pennsylvania Avenue. All four of them had broken windows just the other day, just, there's just nothing to do out here, there's nothing walkable, there's no place to, to go, there's no place to shop. If you have a, if you want to work, I don't know how you get there, there's no buses. That's actually in the transportation part of the, the report. We don't have buses, we have no places for them to go, there's no public parks. So, the kids are just, I mean, I feel bad for them, there's no place for them to go. So they sometimes come over to our neighborhood, play the basketball courts. I don't find that a big deal. But, when some of them are really idle, breaking things, or going into other pool areas, climbing fences, it's, it does hurt the neighborhoods, we are concerned about that. And you're going to put more houses in there, and, or, you know, more things in there, but nothing for them to do, no place to work. We just really want more commercial in our area, more retail, something walkable. Okay, so, and then the last concern of this homeowner was that there's still farms right there, there's horse properties. So he's got a horse property, there's also one right on the southeast side of the street, and that, that traffic is not just traffic. Traffic in a commercial is usually just during the day, but traffic for an apartment is 24/7, 200-plus. How, more cars are going to be right there on the corner, coming in and out. And I guess the, the bright lights, it appears, is very hard on the animals when people are coming in and out at night. So, he just wanted to make sure that we pointed out the impact in the welfare of the animals and the farms that are still in the area. So, in short, the developer has gotten his piece of the apartment pie, and we would like the commissioners to please deny this, or please try to increase the amount of commercial that's on the corner. I don't feel that 4.5, 4.5 acres going to the, the R4, and only 1 point, let me see, 1.43 going to commercial, it's really not very much. We're just take, giving more and more people in here, and just nothing for them to do, no place to shop, nothing. So, we ask you to please deny this.
Thank you for coming down today, Ms. Miranda, sharing your concerns, and I appreciated your email correspondence with me. I certainly wasn't trying to be overly contrite in my response, I was just trying to get you information, because I knew we were coming up on the hearing, and I wanted to make sure you could relay that to your neighbors and such.
Yes, and we have a lot of neighbors, it's, we've never done this before. I'm, I'm on the board with Thornhill, but I'm not used to trying to organize and talk to different board members across all these, so it has been challenging, but everyone's really on board with the same idea, we really have the same needs, so.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Right, thank you.
I do want to take a second and just kind of address a couple of those concerns before I invite Ms. Mock back up to speak on this item as well. Just a couple of things that are probably frustrations for the neighbors, and they're also, you know, not necessarily not frustrations for us. I share your frustrations in some extent, I wish that we could design everybody's site for them in the sense that we could tell them what, what to put where, and that's just simply not how it works. And, and so there's lots of things where I see, you know, development where, boy, I wish it was going to be something else, because it's, it would be a great location for it, but when an applicant comes in, our role is simply to view that application through the lens of whether or not that application is compatible with the surrounding area. And there are legal limitations as well in our right to dictate what a property owner does and doesn't do with their land. But, I, I understand your frustration there. From a police standpoint, I certainly don't want to represent that I'm speaking for the police department, but obviously, where a police office, a dispatch location is, and where patrols are located are two very different things. Our police force has a lot of sort of hub-and-spoke mentality in terms of where the stations are located, but how far the officers can service in an area. I'm not saying that, that police services aren't stretched here, because I don't know. But I will say that that's something that is a little bit of a misconception. The station may be 10 miles away, but I'd be surprised if an officer is 10 miles away at any given point. Another thing that I have to, I have to say, when I look at applications like this, and I'm looking at an aerial on my screen, this application really, so everybody understands, is a maximum of 108 units. And when we talk about designing somebody's site for them and getting a clear picture, if we ask 100 developers or applicants that came forward to give us what they're going to do with their property when they come through the zoning request, 99 of them would tell you they have no idea. And that's not to say that they're not prepared. In order to, to get development going, they have to be properly zoned, because that process in most cases can take 100 days or more to get zoned, and then you go out and you figure out if you can develop something or not. And so, the challenge is, we, what I think, and I'll let Commissioner Pennington speak for himself, but what, when I heard him say that, the way I internalized it was, "We need two tracts. We need to know what's going to be residential and what's going to be commercial. Don't tell us that it's, it might be one or the other, because there are different compatibility measures we will take into account when we make those decisions." The other thing I spent a lot of time talking with the applicant about was, there's supposed to be a public road that would be constructed, and you can see it there, it's kind of that, that channel, that C-shaped road that surrounds the property to the north and to the west. That road is still being constructed, is that correct, Mr. Rollins? It's just a private drive, it's not a public road, so they can take, you know. So, there's going to be a boundary between the R4 and the R1 that's adjacent, which honestly is pretty rare. That normally doesn't exist. There's also going to be that road separating the R4 to the north, which really doesn't require it. It's an advantage to spread it out. The commercial tract, we do have certainty with what will be there, and that's done through the uses. And that's something that's really confusing to the public, and I hate that it is, but what he's done is he's taken the base zoning, the C3 base zoning. In our ordinances, there are a certain amount of allowed uses, permissible uses. Then there's a certain number of conditional uses that require him to take a different step in order to be able to use the property that way. And then in his application, he's prohibited a lot of uses. And the uses that I've asked him to prohibit or strike in our discussions, and I want to be clear, too, I never at any point told Mr. Rollins, "You've got to strike these or I won't support the application." I said, "These are uses that I don't think are compatible, and I think you should consider removing from your application." And those uses are memorialized in, in his application today. And these are things like parking garages, which obviously this site's density doesn't require that. There are things like motels and hotels, commercial lodging. There are things like spectator sports and entertainment restricted, that doesn't mean anything to you, but you don't want it, I promise. So, it's, we've tried, and the separation for, with the loudspeakers and things are issues that we've all faced, and we've sort of evolved these policies as a way to protect residential surrounding uses from commercial. So, I do feel like we've gotten a lot of certainty in comparison to where he was with his application a month ago, as to what will ultimately be here. I think he's addressed a lot of the issues that, that we had. It's always frustrating, Mr. Rollins, to his, to his credit, said, "Look, I don't, I don't do this a lot, I'm representing a client, but I don't, this isn't something, I don't come to the, so just tell me what we need to do here." And, and I said, you know, "We need two tracts, we need to clean this up." So he's done it. So, I just wanted to kind of comment on some of the things you'd mentioned, before we bring up anybody else. But, Ms. Mock, do you want to come, give us some comments on this?
So I went on County Assessor, and I just mapped out with the neighborhoods, and from that corner of Penn and 192nd, we have almost 5,000 units of housing. And that does include the two apartment complexes, which are 430 units between the two apartment complexes that are within that one-mile block. I just don't think that 100 units basically is going to make that big of a difference in the count of homes. I don't think it's needed, but in the grand scheme of things, going from 5,000 homes to 5,100 is not going to make that big of a difference. But that commercial lot would make a huge difference in our area. And 1.4 acres with a 10-foot easement isn't going to be sufficient to build anything substantial. Like, like you mentioned, you're going to wind up with a tiny gas station, or, he had mentioned that this builder in the past has done several strip malls, which we are supportive of. But you're going to have a two, maybe three-unit strip mall, and you're not going to have enough space to have anything substantial in that area. So, I understand the profit margin with apartments is huge, I understand wanting to put in that type of housing. But maybe we can find some middle ground, we can compromise, we can expand that commercial space so that it is more sufficient to actually make an impact on the area.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Those are the only two people that I had signed up to speak on this item. Is there anybody else that wants to be heard on this item today, before the commissioners and chat about it? Okay.
I just want to make a comment quickly, and it's not going to affect really my vote on this particular item. I, I do have some sympathy and concern whenever I see, and generally how it comes to us is a very old PUD that's coming back to us, because some portion of it, large or small, was not developed at the time after it was zoned. And years later, you know, they come back and things have changed, and what they want to do with it's changed, and so on. But the reference in the letter to the fact that, you know, when, when this property was zoned originally, there was a plan, and it did provide for a certain amount of this and a certain amount of that, and it was laid out. And now, according to their view, the, the applicant is coming back and trying to upset that balance. And I must say, I do have some sympathy for that view and concern about it. But of course, I do understand and would say that, you know, we do not have any control whatsoever over how fast things get developed. We have to look at what's in front of us at the time, see whether what's being proposed is appropriate as, from a land use standpoint, and go with that. It is, it, it has been most concerning to me in the past when pieces of property are carved out for things like billboards and so on, you know, when clearly, it's like this was property, this was a portion of this property that was deemed unusable, and therefore, you know, it was, it was supposed to be open space. Well, now they don't need open space, now they need a billboard. But in a situation like this, it, it's a little harder, I think, to say, "Well, that was 15 years ago." I mean, it, it, it's a little harder to say, "We have to abide by the arrangement." A lot has happened in the amount of time since that agreement was originally struck. And if there's anything that I've learned, sitting around this horseshoe, on the one hand, zoning is forever, we have to look at it that way and, and address each, each application in front of us as if, you know, the next person, or the next person, or the next person could take full advantage of whatever parameters they have, and we have to view things that way. On the other hand, you know, zoning is never forever, it's just there until the next guy comes along with the application fee and wants to do something different with the property, so.
Well, and, and I'll, I mean, I'll just add to that, you know, our staff report tells us that the original PUD and Vision 3 tracts connected with an interior collector street system, that's the street that was shown earlier. Tract 1 is located at the corner and allows commercial uses, that's the tract in question today. Tract 2 is on the west and has been developed with personal storage, and that personal storage exists. Tract 3 on the north has been developed with apartments, so the, the original vision did unfold, it just didn't fully unfold, and we have this hard corner that's left. And I don't know whether, you know, Mr. Rollins has people lined up to build apartments or not. It's not terribly relevant, is the reality of the situation to us, just from an objective review of the, of the application, the item. But, what I do see is that we're going to have 108 units of apartments, south of apartments, east of self-storage, mini-storage, that separates from residential. If we could design it, I think this is the way we would design it, in, in terms of compatibility and all that, rather than having, you know, potentially a three-story apartment building right up against somebody's back fence, right? That's less desirable. So, I mean, I'm, I am supportive of, of the application, just because we're not talking about adding a ton of units. We are leaving some commercial. The commercial corner will develop commercially, there's not a residential person who wants to live on the hard corner of 192nd and Penn. But, the, the application as a whole, I think the way that you've amended it, I'm, I'm supportive of. And I think it's, I think it makes a lot of sense. There's a lot of concern about growth in the area, you know, and I, I share the concern, it's a very desirable area. And we've seen a lot of growth out there, and I think we're going to continue to. I didn't check today to see, I know in the aerial that I'm looking at on my screen, there was some widening done, some intersection improvements done and things like that. I don't know additional improvements that may be planned from a road infrastructure standpoint, but we're told in our staff report that this infrastructure is considered appropriate for the uses that are in front of us. So, you know, with the changes that have been made, I'm supportive of it. Are any other comments or concerns from commissioners?
Yeah, just quickly, I mean, unfortunately, government is not perfect. Rarely ever, despite the fact that I wish it were true, do we, we even as commissioners walk away 100% satisfied every single item. And so, sometimes I worry that compromise means, to some, I have to get everything. Well, no, usually it doesn't, unfortunately. I wish we could all be happy 100% of the time with an outcome. But, but where we are versus where we were is pretty dramatic. What the applicant came here before to ask for us approval for was pretty much anything. It was R4, it was C3, it was, "We don't know what we're going to do." At this point now, you're on notice, it's a maximum of 108 units. You're on notice, there will be, there will be commercial. You know it's going to be on the hard corner, you know the uses that are not going to be allowed there. You, you know the level of exposure. Unfortunately, I, I, I don't know how to, how they make a marketing decision, a market decision, about how many units of apartments are appropriate in what places. What I do know is, the city of Oklahoma City needs more places for people to live, because people want to live here. So, balancing that demand with respect for the different areas that we have, and the existing neighborhoods we have, is a very difficult challenge. And I wish we could make everybody happy, but unfortunately, we, we can't always. So, I think this is a good, reasonable compromise, and I intend to vote yes, and I, I will make that motion since I know the chairman cannot.
Well, so let me go about just sort of rereading some of the changes that were agreed to that are not wholly reflected in your staff report, just to make sure they're clear. The first one would just be the additional uses, which I read to you, and you have those that need to be added as additional prohibited uses, as TE1. TE2 would amend 8.2.4 to say the distance shall be measured from the edge of a residential use to the nearest order speaker or gas pump, I'm comfortable with that. The next one would be the signage regulations to confirm that there will be two freestanding. signs in the PUD, ground and monument signs only. The 12.4 and 12.5 should be amended, just to be essentially combined. Actually, you could just strike 12.4, frankly, and 12.5 gets you the same thing. So we will just, TE3 would be striking 12.4 from the NDS. The 17.2, which would be, the next TE would be, "Dumpster shall be located within the area and screened by, sufficient height to screen with a fence or masonry wall, no closer than 50 feet," which he's got. And then last but not least, would just be the landscaping. And Mr. Butler, on that one, let me ask you a question. What would be, from a planning, the planning department's perspective, for screening in between the two tracks? What would, I mean, it would seem to me that a site-proof fence there may not be ideal wholly. What would be your thought on that, if you don't mind?
You mean in addition to a site-proof fence, or?
Like, if, so if we were, so if we can require a site-proof fence as developed in between the C3 and the R4, but would we want a site-proof fence along that? I don't think, know that we would want one along that whole boundary necessarily.
Not necessarily. I mean, tree, we've been doing, a good spacing for trees is 20 feet. If you, you know, 30 feet's a little, can be a little sparse, depending on the tree, but 20 feet's pretty safe, if you wanted to do a buffer like that.
So we, so we've already got a 20-foot buffer in terms of greens, greenbelt space between the two uses. That's in the NDS. So all we have to do is basically require trees on 20-foot centers, and then the site-proof screening at six feet, you think, is sufficient?
Yeah, and you're talking about between track A and B, or are you talking about?
Correct.
Yeah. We do want, some connectivity between the two tracks would be ideal. I mean, I know, I know we have, we'll have sidewalk on the arterials.
Pedestrian connectivity?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll add that as a TE to require pedestrian connectivity between track A and track B.
Can I chime in here?
Yeah.
So one of the things that I see a lot is the site-proof screening that, because, because we require that, then everybody throws landscaping out, "Oh, we don't need any landscaping." And you end up with a lot of, you see a lot of back-of-house, commercial, with just concrete up to a fence, you know, a six-foot board fence, and it looks awful.
Yep.
I'm of the opinion here, and everyone's willing to agree or disagree, that...
Disagree with the landscape architect?
Yeah.
Okay.
That the type of fence is, can be up to the developer as far as whether they want an ornamental aluminum fence that you can see through, or they want a solid fence. I think what's important is on the residential, the multifamily tract, that we do the canopy trees, 20-foot on center and on their 10-foot buffer. And then I think on the, on the commercial track, we ought to look at a six-foot, a continuous hedge, the evergreen hedge, that will achieve six feet in height within, you know, two years. And then whether they do a fence or not between those, that's, that's up to them.
Mr. Rollins, your thoughts on that?
I think we would be okay with that. I mean, that pretty well goes along with what's in the ordinance. It's just specifying one over the other.
I like specifying.
We're fine with that.
Okay. I like that. Any objection to that from commissioners? Okay. So just to, could you articulate that one more time for Commissioner Penney to benefit?
On the multifamily side, we're requiring a 10-foot buffer, canopy trees, 20 feet on center, to be planted 20 feet on center. On the commercial side, a 10-foot landscape buffer with a continuous evergreen hedge that achieves six foot in height within two years.
And then do we need to amend the screening requirement here? Or we can just say, "An ornamental or site-proof fence shall be allowed?"
Yeah.
Okay. And then one final change, Commissioner Penney, I forgot to mention, is on the architecture. 14.2 should be amended to be 60% brick veneer, rock, and stone with 40% ephistocac wood or concrete board. And that's, that's the balance of the changes that are in my packet, based on our discussion.
Could I ask for a clarification on the signs? We say two signs. That means for the C3, correct?
For track A.
For track A. Okay, yes. And then R4 would be per zoning?
In accordance with code, yeah.
Okay.
I'm fine with that. I looked at the code. I don't have any objections to that.
Okay.
I'm going to do my best here, but I think we're going to need to make sure that there's a lot of clarity about this. So we might have to join forces here to make sure I've got everything accurately. I move approval, a move that we recommend to city council, approval of PUD, where am I? I lost my place. PUD 1817, with the following amendments. And I'm going to try, Mr. Chairman, so just interject with particular units. TE1, that we remove, that we amend 8.2.3, and I know I've got the use units incorrectly, excuse me, that we add TE1, that it amends 8.2.3 prohibiting the following uses. Can you read that into the record?
Yeah, prohibiting the following additional uses, in addition to those outlined in the master design statement, 8300.44, 8150.6.5, 8150.6.3, and 8300.65.
We need to add TE2 to combine 12.4 and 12.5.
That's fine.
We need to add TE, we also will add TE3. And I've, I've lost an item, Mr. Chairman, so forgive me. We are not at the buffer. There is one more item before...
So TE3 would be amending the master design statement in 8.2.4 to read that "The distance shall be measured from the edge of a residential use to the nearest order speaker or gas pump," as opposed to building.
TE4, I believe we're at buffer.
That'd be the landscaping, yes, sir.
We would require a 10-foot buffer from the residential, help me, Commissioner Clare too, 10-foot buffer from the residential with trees on 20-foot centers. We will have a 10-foot buffer from the commercial towards the residential.
Track A.
With hedges that will reach a six-foot height at maturity.
Continuous.
Continuous.
Evergreen.
Evergreen. Excellent. I'm learning about how to be, about landscape architecture and all kinds of things.
We're taking this boundary serious. And I'm going to come out, and I'm going to measure that hedge road.
Right.
I'm going to drive out there and measure it.
And finally, TE5, amending the allowed architectural materials to the following percentages, Mr. Chairman.
Would be, for 14.2, it'd be 60% brick veneer, rock, or stone masonry, and 40% ephistocac wood or concrete board.
Good luck on the minutes on, on that whole, on this whole item.
Mr. Chairman?
But before you, but before you stop, can we do TE6 and 7?
Yes.
TE6 is the amendment to the freestanding signs, to allow for two, there shall be two freestanding signs, 12.2. And then TE7 would be the amended language to 17.2, which just should read dumpsters shall be screened, should be sufficiently height, screening should be sufficient height with a masonry or fence wall or rock wall placed no closer than 50 feet from all adjacent lines of residential use. And that's the last one.
There we go.
So we have seven technical evaluations.
That is the, that's, that's the most...
Commissioner Penney, could you read that again for me, please?
Please, no.
The adjustment to the architectural materials was only on the residential portion?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, the, the commercial was 70-30 as outlined. So I'll take that motion as read with the additional seven TEs. Mr. Rollins, thank you for the time to try to work through that, and I appreciate everybody coming down from the neighborhoods and such to share. Please continue to monitor these applications out there and share your concerns and your comments with me as they're, as they're coming forward, because I certainly want to hear from them. So I'll take a second on the motion on Prime Gov when someone's able to make it. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers, so I have a motion and a second to recommend approval to city council on PUD 1817. Please cast your votes. And for those folks from the neighborhoods associations, I would encourage you to reach out to the city council office, Councilman Stone Cypher, before the city council hearing if you want to continue the discussion. So thank you. That application is approved. Next item on the agenda is item 19.
19 is PUD 1823, application to rezone 8524 North Sooner Road from AA to PUD 1823.
Applicant with us? Give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Terry Pollak. I'm with SDP Solutions. I'm at 7006 Northwest 63rd in Bethany, is where my office is. I'm representing the developer, Brandon Bradley. As you can see from our little sketch here, this large parcel, it's about a 15, a little over 15, 15.2 acres of rural countryside there, right on Sooner Road. And a quick history of why this is happening this way. He wants some commercial off of the Sooner Road, and then, and then some RA in the back. It's all currently AA. The Bradleys, as a family, have a electrical business, electricians, and they have an office, so their, their building is on Northwest Expressway at the moment. And the father, who had run this business and moved it up to very large, almost 100 employees, has passed away. So the boys are now taking over the business, and the widowed mom is there now. So now his intent is, and the purpose of this PUD, is to move his business, this smaller, well-scaled-down electrical business of 10 employees or so, to Sooner Road, as it shows on the front of Sooner Road, and then to allow another possible C1 compliant commercial thing on that, that three-acre parcel on C1. And then mom and maybe one of the boys will be putting their homes or residences in the back, on the south side of that parcel. So that's why this is a combination of commercial on the west and residential or RA on the back. The, the TEs that are in here, the two TEs are certainly, were fine. He's fine with those recommendations. I somehow left off the most important part, to allow the thing he wanted to construct. But that and the tree, and it's a very, very rural, a lot of terrain change, as you can see from your Exhibit D that shows the contours. So the, one of the TEs was about keeping as many of the trees as possible, which they do intend to do that. Certainly, the southeast corner with all those trees, there's no, they'll be, their home will be, whatever gets built in that area will be a home that will be west of those. And that pond is going to remain in place as well. So we, I'm here to answer any questions, but we just hope for approval.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Penney, this is your word. This says so in the staff report. Do you want to lead our discussion?
Yes, I'll start us off. One, how, what's your, and I apologize that I did not actually have the opportunity to reach out to you directly before now, but I am curious about, as this is something that we've asked of other applicants, as far as the dumpsters, and ensuring that the dumpsters are a sufficient distance from the homes that are, that are nearby, that's C1. I don't know, I don't know the best way to do it in that there's, from the looking, from looking at this map, I'm just trying to understand where all the existing homes are and where you'd like to put the C3. I guess I just would like to know, is there some way that we can ensure that the dumpsters are going to be sufficiently far away from those homes?
For the homes?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. If you had exhibit...
At least the existing homes that are right next to the C1, not necessarily the ones that your, your client owns.
Now, you're talking about residential dumpsters, correct? Well, they'll just have those carts.
No, I mean, well, the commercial one, that requires dumpsters.
Yeah, well, they'll have, they'll have to have commercial dumpsters, obviously, there. So this road, the private road that's on the south, will, will have to design a dumpster, just like Oklahoma City requires on all commercial deals, will design, probably me, will design on the first one, on Sooner Road, a means to stab the dumpster, a regular dumpster with a fence and the whole thing on that. And then when, when the, if and when he develops and builds something east of the one off of Sooner Road, the second one, it'd be the same thing, is that will, a dumpster will be required by code. So it'll, it just isn't shown, it wasn't addressed on this drawing, but we'll still have to comply with the C1 code requirements for dumpsters.
My, my concern is about the homes that are, am I not, am I, I'm looking at the map. I know it's not always clear with our black and white copies of, of it. But aren't there homes right directly north, isn't there, is that a home directly north of the commercial?
Yeah, there is a home, yeah. I, I'm with you on finding. First of all, right above the, his commercial thing on Sooner Road is an abandoned, that C1 zone that's above it there, north of it, that's an abandoned restaurant, that, this same guy that owns all this, that's just an abandoned restaurant right now. But his home, the owner of all this land that he's buying from possibly, is, is that, that home right up against that track. Now, of course, we'll have to have the fence dividing off from the C1 from the AA, there'll be a site-proof fence there. But what we can do, and if, we can, we can make sure that the dumpster is more, is actually further up towards Sooner Road, in reality. It could be up, you know, off, off his entrance into where his parking lot is.
I don't know what's the best way to read that, put that in. That's kind of hard for us to... I guess my concern is, you're going to have people who you're waking up with the dumpsters. That's been an issue we've been dealing with, and the screening. You're talking about a big, wide-open area, agricultural area. Just want to make sure we're not having them stare at dumpsters and have to listen to dumpsters be emptied. That, that's my biggest, that was my biggest concern, was, was that, in light of its proximity. But that is comforting to know that the nearest residential, at least, is where your, where your client lives.
Well, it is, to be fair, it is right, right now.
Right now, exactly. So I think, I think it'd be nice for us to come up with something that we can do.
I think the language that we normally use would be sufficient, because that's going to require it to be located, you know, closer.
And I believe that the code requires it to be so many feet away. The dumpster must be so many feet away from...
I think, yeah, the code says 25. We've been saying 50.
Yeah, we've been stipulating 50.
So do you think you could comply with 50?
50 feet away from residential zone?
Yes.
We've got 150 feet, so yeah, we just have to be sitting almost on the road, is what it amounts to, on our new road, to make that 50 feet away. And I'll still have to check to make sure it's, well, we're pinched in between that one on the south, too. You've got one on the south, there's a home there now, and then this other guy's on the But again, we've got 150 foot of width here and 900 foot of length, so we should be able to make sure that the dumpster will fit somewhere in that distance that will meet the code.
Well, I'm, I'm going to recommend we add the TE to make it 50 feet, and you'll have time between now and council to figure out if you can comply with that.
Yeah, that's a good idea, just add the TE to it.
That's my only, my only comment.
For now. Okay. Commissioner, Mr. Powers?
I do have a question about signage, and they're just not the usual language that I'm used to with respect to non-accessory signage and EMD signage. Is it because the zoning doesn't allow for that? Staff, something, tell me something here. Normally, under, under these kinds of applications, it will say, "Non-accessory signs are prohibited, no EMD signage will be allowed."
I can't imagine in C1 that it would be.
Maybe it's not. Is there someone here who can answer that question?
JJ, are, are EMD signs allowed in C1?
They're not allowed.
Thank you, Commissioner Eagle.
And so it doesn't need that language, because those things would not be permitted by the zoning?
I think EMD 1 and 2 would be permitted if they meet certain conditions. So if you want to prohibit them altogether...
What are those conditions?
I don't know.
Don't know.
Not off the top of my head.
So we just need to, we just need to take the question out of it, then.
Can you, can you agree to that, that there'll be no EMD signage?
I could if I understood what that meant, I guess.
Electronic signs, electronic message play.
Yeah.
Are you asking me, can we admit, can we just put a TE that says, "No electronic signs will be allowed"?
Yeah, we're going to prohibit EMD.
Yeah, he's fine with that. You know, he's electrical, you know, electricians, you know, they'll just put up a sign with a light on, they can wire it, of course, of course. So they'll, it'd be just, it won't have that.
Thank you.
Shining all over the neighborhood. I would agree with that.
Okay, great. Any other concerns from anybody? My only issue was the dumpster issue. That's what I had, too. So you, do you fully understand what we, on that?
I do.
Okay. All right, just want to make sure we're being clear with you before you walk out of here.
I was having trouble there, but I do understand it, and we'll go back and discuss and make sure that, there's other options that I can do, because, because his building can be moved, one, you know, his commercial site can be moved to fit in, but I, I'm comfortable that I can make it fit to where it won't be, it'll be within the right distance from both residential ones that are there.
Correct.
Of course, the odd thing is that the guy next door could build another house, you know, later on, right in front of your dumpster, or, you know, later, but we'll still have to have that 50 feet.
Got it. Is there anybody here that wants to be heard on this item today? I didn't have anybody sign up to speak, but I thought I'd check. Okay. If not, if you're ready, Commissioner Pennington, I think we're ready for a motion.
I move that we recommend a city council approval of P U D 1823 with the following amendments. We add T E 3, requiring a 50-foot buffer from, excuse me, requiring that dumpsters be located 50 feet from any residentially-zoned property, and adding T E 4, that prohibits the use of EMD signage.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval of the city council for P U D 1823 as amended by, with the T E's amended by Commissioner Pennington. It's been seconded by Commissioner Coffee. Please cast your votes when available. All votes should be cast, and the application is approved. Good luck. Next item on today's agenda is item number 20.
This isn't a recusal, but I do need to step out for a few minutes.
Okay. No problem.
We'll be back shortly.
Yep.
This is case P U D 1824, application to rezone 4901 Southwest 149th Street from I-2 to P U D 1824.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, I am Eric Groves. I'm an attorney. I represent the applicant. This P U D presents a very unique opportunity here in the city. We have 100 acres of grassland that's going unused, and we want to develop it into a storage facility for heavy equipment and machinery. As many of you know, industrial space is getting increasingly scarce in the city.
Yes, it is.
And land that would allow the storage of this kind of equipment is also getting scarce. This would offer a centralized area for construction equipment to be stored. We're going to rent spaces to various owners of that kind of equipment. I want to thank the staff for helping shepherd this through, and thank Commissioner Coffee for talking to us about it. I'd like to introduce my client, Kyle Mason, who's here, if you have any technical questions. But I think this will work out very well and be of considerable public benefit. What questions can I ask, answer for you?
Commissioner Coffee, this is your word, ma'am. Do you have questions?
Oh, I forgot. There's four T E's. We agree to all of them.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you. Commissioner Coffee, questions or comments for the applicant?
I've spoken with the applicant's representative, Mr. Groves. I have driven this area both during the daylight and at my own risk at night one time. It's definitely an appropriate area for this project. As Mr. Groves has stated, they do agree with all four of the technical evaluations. They are willing to construct a six-foot fence around the properties. In addition to that, I guess you're also in agreement for the additional 17-foot easement along Southwest 149th Street.
Yes.
Okay.
We're also going to give an avocation easement to the city.
And along Marina.
And to the airport trust.
Okay. I've received no comments from the neighboring individuals, and so unless there are other comments from staff or commissioners, I'm ready to make a motion.
Fair enough. Commissioners, any comments on this one? Let me ask, is there anybody that wants to be heard on this item today, P U D 1824? I personally don't know of a better location for such a use, quite frankly. So, yeah, if you're ready to make a motion, let's make one.
I recommend to city council approval of P U D 1824.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to city council on P U D 1824. I'll take a second on Prime Gov. Been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and the item is approved.
Thank you. And by the way, it's awfully good to see your faces again in person.
Likewise, it's been a while.
That Zoom stuff was getting kind of old.
Tell us about it.
I think your hair's become a little bit more white from the Gray Council.
Said respectfully, of course, Mr. Groves. Next item on today's agenda is item 21.
This is case S P U D 1316, application to rezone 424 Northwest 30th Street, C3 Community Commercial to S P U D 1316.
Good afternoon. Mark Zizza with Johnson and Associates, 1 East Sheridan Avenue. I think what we have here is a fairly straightforward application, seeking to rezone a C3 property with historic designation overlay. There's an existing single-family house. Much of this block is existing non-conforming, single-family homes. This is a downzoning. We're asking for an S P U D that has an R2, two-family use unit to allow for the construction of a 780-square-foot garage apartment. We appeared before the Historic Preservation Board, where we spent an extensive amount of time discussing the size of the garage. It was after that meeting, we sought to specifically permit the size of the garage within the S P U D. They ultimately recommended approval without that portion in the spud, excuse me, in the spud. So we're here asking, we believe it's appropriate and compatible with the area, as well of the historic sandborne maps. I have a full PowerPoint that I can happily go through to walk through the entire case. I'll leave that up to the discretion of the commission if you feel you need to hear more.
Thank you, Mr. Zizza. Before I ask Commissioner Powers for comments, I think it makes some sense to start by having municipal councilor's office address, just kind of a, for lack of a better way of putting it, sort of a jurisdictional issue. There's a process by which you, your applicant can apply for a C A. That C A goes to the Historic Preservation Certificate of Appropriateness. It goes to Historic Preservation. They vote to approve or disapprove it. If you disagree with their decision, your appeal goes to the Board of Adjustment. They're here seeking a rezoning of the property to allow for basically two-family, like R2, basically, right? I mean, that's the way you would describe it.
Yes.
And within that allowance, they're asking for a 780-square-foot additional structure. I think Commissioner Powers was speaking about this beforehand with Mr. Butler, and I think we're all curious, what is the purview of the planning commission through the zoning process here? And by allowing this, are we taking away the Historic Preservation Commission's right to hear whether or not that structure is appropriate under their purview?
Planning Commission, really, their function is to recommend the actual zoning on the property. The H P Commission looks at the design and to make sure it's compatible and it's in conformance with the H P ordinances.
So would it be your opinion, then, that really what we should do as a planning commission is either recommend approval or denial, without the technical evaluation stipulating the size of the accessory unit, because that would fall to the district?
That can be decided by the H P Commission.
Okay. But before I ask you for coming on that, Mr. Zizza, any comments or questions from commissioners to municipal council's office on that? I want to make sure we're all clear about this.
Yeah, I want to be sure I'm clear about this. If this were, if this were any other zoning request, if it were not in an H P district, we would absolutely be within our purview to specify the size of the garage apartment. So while on the one hand, I am very reluctant to get into a turf tussle with the H P Commission, and beyond that, I mean, I simply do not want to invade their purview. It seems to me that in this particular case, the question before us with respect to the specification of the size of the garage apartment, or the second structure, the second residential structure, is really sort of equally divided. They have a say, but we also have a say. I'm not sure that by acting in this particular case, we really are invading their purview. I think we're acting within our own purview.
So to that end, that's actually an interesting point. So, Mr. Brummett, if we were to approve it.
Yes.
Would they still be required to go to the Historic Preservation Commission and seek a C A, even though we're approving the structure from a zoning standpoint? The H P Commission would still have to approve a certificate of appropriateness to construct a 780 square foot.
That's correct. That's correct, yes.
Okay. So then it's really moot. To your point, it's moot.
Yeah, and I really, yeah, I think it is moot. And I think, in this particular instance, I would be inclined, and of course, we have other people here who may want to be heard on this.
Sure.
But to move the application as it is without the T E, because I, in my view, this is absolutely a good use of this property. It is a downzoning, as was indicated. It is, you know, in keeping with the planning commission's support for infill development and Plan OKC's commitment to, you know, diverse housing in terms of size and cost.
Yep.
Or price point. It's consistent with, you know, the technical review by staff. The evidence that's before us of the sandborne map and what was there originally was, you know, more than twice the size of this, of this application.
Which, again, really isn't particularly relevant to us, what the.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, it's appropriate to the area. It's a, you know, the property behind it to the south has a two-story garage apartment and sort of catty-corner to the west behind it, so it's not a, it's not a scale issue. My inclination at this point would be to move approval without the T E, so just lay it out there.
Mr. Zizza, what would be your, I mean, the T E's there, that was included by staff. Would you have an objection to the T E 1 being struck?
That would be our preference. As mentioned throughout the entire S P U D document, we specify that for every component of the design, we will go back and seek a C A. In no way are we seeking to circumvent that process, except for the footprint of the garage of 780 square feet. And we have reasons for that that I can get into, but it sounds like the size of the garage is supported by this commission.
Okay. Just for the benefit of the commission, I think, Katie Friedl, do you want to provide some comments and context from your standpoint?
Sure. I'm Katie Friedl. I'm principal planner for current planning and urban design, and I'm the Historic Preservation Officer, Staff to the H P Commission. I think there may be some clarification that I need as well, because our understanding, well, first, a little background. When the, when the S P U D came to the H P Commission and was in their packet, there was no language restricting, specifying a size of a garage. That was raised during the commission meeting. We spent a good deal of time going back and forth with the applicant and legal about exactly what that meant and how that would be enforced. And then subsequent to the meeting, the applicant submitted a revised master design statement. My understanding is that, yes, this would still go to H P Commission for a certificate of appropriateness, but they would have no purview over the size of the structure. Currently, the commission has design guidelines, which are adopted within the municipal code. They're recommended by planning commission and adopted by city council that very specifically address the size of garages. So it is something that is an important discussion every time a garage comes before the commission. It's important to residents, it's important to neighbors and to property owners. So the commission and staff had real concern about removing their ability to assess an appropriate size for a new garage. Our staff report made clear, and as was discussed in the H P Commission meeting, we have documentation that would suggest this is an appropriate size for a garage, that staff would recommend approval for a garage of this size. The concern was more the principle of removing that purview from the Historic Preservation Commission and opening the door to property owners, thinking that doing a spud is the right way to get around a guideline that they think the commission might not interpret in their favor.
We've been told under no uncertain terms from legal, as far as I take it, that any action we take does not remove the purview of the H P Commission to deny the accessory structure from that standpoint. We're simply allowing it by use, but the historic preservation overlay may preclude them from having it, should H P deny it, and then if they appealed it, you know, they'd go to Board of Adjustment, and then they'd go to District Court. But I'm understanding, Mr. Brummett, to have said that that's, by us approving that and striking T E 1, we're not removing it from your purview. We're simply saying, from a zoning standpoint, it would be appropriate.
Yeah, that's, I guess that's why we, because the text, this is a tricky one, because the text says, "Except that the accessory structure shall be expressly permitted," a 700-square-foot floor plate. So we thought, well, if that's in there, in the MDS, that is the zoning, and therefore the H P Commission would have no ability.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not removing the historic preservation overlay from, we're not removing it. So that overlay exists, which means if you want to build the garage, you've got to go get a C A. I wouldn't understand it to be any differently. You can, you've got to have the zoning, and we do have the right, I agree with Commissioner Powers, legally, we set accessory structure sizes all the time. So we could say, they can build a 4,000-square-foot garage back there, we could say that, but from an overlay perspective, there's another zoning component here, which is the historic preservation overlay. So then they have to go seek a C A to be able to do that, and if you guys deny it, it's denied.
That, I think that was the confusion during our meeting, and I, from conversations with the applicant, my understanding was still that, in their opinion, the way it was worded, H P would still have to grant the C A and would be able to review the design, the materials, et cetera, but would not be able to say, "780's too big, you have to make it smaller," that that, that that would be reviewed. So I, you know, defer to legal if they think that's accurate, or if they think H P would still be able to come back and say, "This size doesn't meet the guidelines, we don't think it's consistent with the district."
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner?
Still do that.
I would like to clarify, if we could just, on a couple of points. Cindy, if we could, you'll probably breeze through pretty quickly here, but if you keep going, we're going to get to a slide that says, "H P Commission." If you could pause, sorry, go back one. Where this stemmed from was there were multiple garage cases on the H P Commission. It is correct that we did not have the expressly permitted size within the S P U D. Based on conversations with staff, we didn't think it would be an issue. After listening to them, the comments became evident at the beginning of the meeting. In bold, still seems to be unclear as to what we're going to approve or not approve in relation to garages. Seems like it's a new day every time we do garages, because I do not feel like I'm being consistent. Those are the commissioners' quotes in reference to the guidelines, which then led to a study session, which no less than a dozen times, we heard the commissioner say, "We think we're being arbitrary in our review." We are specifically requesting this garage size be taken out of their purview, which we believe there is precedence for this. Cindy, if you go a few slides.
I don't think we can do that.
Well, if you could go.
That would require us to remove the overlay.
We disagree, and I'll.
Well, I mean, understand that what I think and what you think at this very moment aren't necessarily all that relevant. What Mr. Brummett says is what we have to take as the legal advice being provided to us as planning commissioners about the way that it works. And I think we could kind of get rabbitholed here for a long time. When I looked at this application, one of the things I thought you could do is you could say, "Well, we'll just say, 'Subject to approval of H P.'" Well, then that, that in and of itself is an action we've never taken before, and that confuses the issue even further. So I don't, I don't, I would not be in favor of including, I think we can approve the zoning on a, on a base zoning or on the S P U D level from where it is today, but that does not remove the H P Commission's authority to review it from a certificate of appropriateness standpoint, because that tract is well-defined. I mean, if you go there and they deny it, then, and you can go there and demand it, whether they're being arbitrary or not. Go there and demand it, and if you don't like it, go to the Board of Adjustment and get a, on appeal, and if you don't like that, you can go to District Court.
Right, and.
Right? I mean.
Well, I'm interested. Do we, could we at least entertain these couple of slides?
Sure, no, of course, yeah, you bet.
So I'd say first, state statute in regard to bulk standards, which includes size of buildings, setbacks, everything else, is specifically granted to the city council and planning commission with their recommendation. We are not asking to remove the overlay from this tract of land. This is an S P U D that I think was done three years ago. It was in the Bricktown Design District. Bricktown staff recommended denial.
I remember this.
The commission recommended denial.
I agree.
We came here with one specific request, that the size of the EMD be permitted, because it wasn't permitted under their code and under their guidelines. Ultimately, you all recommended approval, and it was approved at city council. We then went back to Bricktown Urban Design, where they reviewed the design. They reviewed the steel, the color of the steel, the placement of the steel, the I-beam attached to it. Ultimately, they recommended approval. Within that spud, we were specific in that the Bricktown Urban Design Commission does not have the purview over the specific standard of the size. This is the same case, just dealing with square footage. This is why we believe that the city, within recent years, has agreed in our case that we can do this under specific circumstances.
Bricktown Design, that also flows through to Board of Adjustment.
That is correct, and it requires a C A, just as H P does.
Good.
So, I mean, Dan humorous here, what is the difference, I mean, what is the difference in your view of the case that he's discussing and the case that's before us, based on the information you've provided?
I'm not really sure. I'm not that much. I'm not that much familiar with this application. I think in this case, though, as you stated, they still have to go to the HP Commission to get the design, the size of the structure, and the location of the structure approved with the CA. And if he's, if, if he thinks that the HP Commission is being arbitrary or anything like that, he can go to the Board of Adjustment.
But, but then, if we stick to including this language about the 780 square feet, how binding is that? Is it that we are the, the binding body? Because to me, if I'm, if I'm taking, if I'm understanding what Mark is talking about, it sounds like if we say 780, it, it doesn't matter if, if the HP Commission says it actually should be 400 square feet should be...
And council's got to say also, right?
Say that again.
Council's got to say also on the same, you know...
They do, but, I mean, I do not have the, the legal expertise here to know. I'm taking Mr. Brummett's comments at face value. So I think if, if, as a commission, we take our municipal councillor's advice and we make a decision, and Mr. Zizou and his team and his applicant disagree with it, I mean, that's, they've got recourse to do other things. But I am, I am not in favor of doing anything that we believe intentionally we are intruding into the purview of the Historic Preservation Commission or of, of that, that tract, of that kind of quasi-judicial review of, of, of an overlay district. I don't, I don't know that I want to go there.
Okay. The only thing I want to say about that is that the other side of it is applicable.
I don't think your mic is on.
The other side of it is also applicable. I don't want to put, I don't want to put this out there and move it forward in a way that indicates that we think we don't have the authority to approve the size of this building. That's why my proposal would be to simply approve...
I agree.
The, the application as it is before us and let it move forward.
Yeah, we're, we're saying the same thing.
Yeah, I, I think we are.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I'm saying we should strike TE1 and let it proceed. And whether or not Mr. Brummett is accurate about, you know, the, the legal tussle there is for you to figure out later. I think we can, I think we can and should move it along from a zoning, from a, you know, sort of base zoning request, but I don't, I don't know what happens from there. You're going to have to figure that out, so...
Understood, and I would be supportive of that.
Okay. Does anybody have any additional questions or need clarity on any of this?
So, so if, if HP goes back and reviews and says 400 square foot maximum, does that mean that Mark goes to the, goes to the Board of Adjustment and then District Court and says, "But the Planning Commission said we get 780."
Sure.
So then, then it, to me, then, then we are, we are subverting the, the HP Commission, because we're saying...
We're just recommending, we're just recommending to the council.
TE, yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, this is the best way to ensure that I think we're staying in our lane, but we're not, you know, sort of seeding what we do in every other instance. Whether or not it goes to the Board of Adjustment and then their client decides to sue and says, "Well, the Planning Commission and City Council said so," and that, that is not, that's not our issue. Is it appropriate? Is it, you know, that's, that's for us to decide. I think I'm in agreement. So does anybody have any different feeling on that?
I don't feel differently. I want to say one thing. I do think, you know, I would say HP needs to figure out where they stand on this issue. I hear about this, outside of this case, all the time. People just trying to add a garage apartment that have lived in this neighborhood for a long time and get denials on very modest proposals. So I just think there's got to be some kind of clarity that's, that's put forth, that people can understand and know where they stand on these items. I agree with, and that's kind of why I was interested, because I saw some of what he had up there on the notes. And this isn't me trying to like beat up, you know, a fellow commission, but there's got to, I mean, we talk about predictability all the time up here. There's got to be an understanding.
I agree with that.
And they, and they themselves, if they're saying they feel like it's arbitrary, you guys better have a study session or something, because I, I'm just hearing about this constantly as, as Ward Six, Commissioner.
Yeah. Arbitrary is a, is a bad word. Subjective is, is within, it is within their purview to be somewhat subjective within their guidelines. That's their job, that's why they're there. It's sort of the opposite of what I think we're supposed to be by and large. And I think that's what the CA process is designed to accommodate, so...
I was just going to note that we actually had a study session yesterday and talked about garages. The garage guidelines were revised several years ago to have some more specificity to them, but, you know, every time you set a maximum for something, then everybody comes in and asks for a little bit more than the maximum. So then you start down that slippery slope again. We've also seen, as you all see, an absolute boom in the interest in garage apartments, which the apartment component of it is a zoning issue, it's not an HP issue. HP deals with can it be two stories or not? Can it be this big or that big or not? So it is something that the commission is aware of. We've seen so many more applications for these, and I think they want to address it and get more clarity on, on how we do consistently and dependably approve larger garages. I will say, on a property like the applicant's, where we have Sanborn map documentation of a very large two-story garage, those are consistently approved. You know, I've gone back through a year and a half's worth of agendas and CAs, and those types of applications quite consistently get approved as proposed, if they meet the other applicable guidelines for materials and that sort of thing. I think it's when we have a vacant lot, when there's never been a garage there before, when someone's torn down a very small garage and wants a very large one, then the commission finds itself struggling to, to address those in a consistent manner, based on what the guidelines say right now.
Well, this is a fairly interesting case, in my view, from a, just a legal standpoint. So I'm, I'm not sure what, what ends up happening, but I, I think we're making the right decision by striking the TE and making a recommendation of the application as presented and, and letting that process move forward as it normally would.
If, if I could make one last comment, just to clarify where we are at and what we believe the spud will allow, and this was, I think after this meeting, we'll continue to have conversation with the city attorney, only because when we were on the HP Commission, and I confirmed with Katie, Rita Tally also believed that this language would take this out of the purview of HP in regards to the one specific item. So just want to make that clear. That is the intent as we move forward, and we'll continue to work with the city attorney's office to flush this out.
Yeah, I mean, you guys have got six weeks, and the staff's got six weeks, and legal's got six weeks to figure it out before it shows up at city council for a vote, so...
Right.
Okay. If there's no more discussion on it, and I don't suppose there's anybody here that wants to be heard on this item, okay. So if not, Commissioner Powers, if you'd like to make a motion, ma'am, it's your word. I'll let you...
Item number 21, SPUD 1316. Oh, I'm sorry, there was one other question I had about this before I do that. And the recommendation from the HP Commission made reference to the height of the building. And my staff report still has this language that the maximum height of any building shall be no taller than the existing structure. My understanding was that you had agreed to the 25 feet.
It's, it's an interesting point, because it shows that we can amend the base zoning district of an HL overlay. By agreeing to restrict it to 25 feet means that our base zoning, which would allow up to 35, would not be the case anymore. But yes, we agree to restrict the height of an accessory structure to either 25 feet or no greater than the height of the existing home. But it is quite the conundrum to agree to that while being fought on the footprint of the accessory structure.
Fair. This is going to be good.
But we're going with 25 feet.
This is what we look for, right?
So I'm moving approval. Item number 21, SPUD 1316, without the TE, number one.
Okay. I have a motion, and I'll take the second on Prime Gov to recommend approval to city council on SPUD 1316. It's been seconded by Commissioner Coffey. Please cast your votes when available.
I don't have a thing to...
That's all right. How do you want to vote?
That's probably me, sorry.
How do you want to vote?
Yay.
Commissioner Powers, vote in affirmative, and the application is recommended for approval.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item 22, election of Planning Commission officers, Mr. Butler. Is there anything we need to do to introduce that, or do I just need to have that discussion? Okay. Thoughts?
Is this a reelection?
Are you, you think you can serve another term?
I'm happy to serve another term. I actually had the conversation with Commissioner Pennington as vice chair to see if he was ready to do it, and he said he'd like another year before he did it. I said I was happy to do it another year at the pleasure of the commission. I'll leave that up to you guys. I can tell you this, my feelings aren't hurt either way. If somebody really wants to do it, I'm more than willing to...
My, my feelings personally, if you're willing to serve, are that, you know, the last year's been so difficult, and it's been so hard to actually get any traction on any real issues or to, you know, feel like you really hit your stride here. It seems to me sort of only fair for you to have another year and, and, you know, that indentured servitude, then you're just going to have to suck it up.
Fair enough.
And I would just like to add that as difficult as it's been, I think you've done a tremendous job.
I agree.
I appreciate that. I tried.
And I, I don't want to do it. So...
I'm looking for a nomination for Commissioner Highsmith.
Well, then, do we just move... I think we all know I'd be terrible at that.
We'd be here for two days.
If no one else is, is just dying to serve as chairman, I, I would nominate our current chairman to serve another term.
I will happily second that.
I didn't mean it to sound like such a backhanded compliment. I do think you've done a wonderful job.
No, I appreciate it. No, I, I mean, it's, it's been a challenging year. We've been out, we've been in, we've been remote, we've had Prime Gov, we haven't had Prime Gov, we did Zoom, sometimes we did Zoom sort of. I mean, it's, it's been, it's been a ride.
It has, it has.
Yeah? Okay. I've got a motion, and I think I have a second from Commissioner Hinkle to nominate Scott Cravens for chair for the next year. Please cast your votes. Yeah, mine's doing weird stuff. Do we just need to...
Real goofy.
Okay, excellent. It passed. There it is. All right. So, and then we need to elect a vice chair.
Happy to serve another term if you all will have me.
I think that's a great idea.
I'll move.
I'll move Commissioner Pennington as vice chair.
Second.
I have a motion, the second, to nominate Commissioner Pennington as vice chair for the next Planning Commission year. Please cast your votes. And Commissioner Pennington is vice chair. I appreciate everything you've done to kind of help me try to move the front part of the meetings along, make those motions and get it going. I think hopefully, if we're back in here full-time, we can really get in a great rhythm there and continue to expedite that process. So, thank you. And just FYI, I'll be gone the next meeting, so you, you're up.
All right, I'm on. It'll be fun in the chambers, and so Zoom is really, it's hard to run the Zoom.
It's really hard. Yeah. That can, oh, I'm sorry, we have one more item on our separate item agenda, forgive me. Item 27, which is the adoption of the Planning Commission bylaws. Mr. Butler, I'll let you...
Yes, we have some new draft bylaws, which the commission has copies of, so it's, it's at your pleasure. If you'd like to discuss point by point, this would be the time to do that, and we can adopt today or defer to some other time if there are things we, you would like us to review and get back to you on.
So I have just one question about item 27. It makes it like there's only two words referenced to our, the application forms that we submitted for appointment as commissioners. That, maybe that was just before, since I came along. I, I don't remember ever filing one. But, but because we're sort of eliminating some language and, and going with different approach there, what is it that is actually required? The information that we are required to give that will then become at least ostensibly public information and available to people? Contact information we're talking about.
Yeah, I think, could you help me find that page?
It's page five, and it's section seven.
Oh, there we go, okay.
At the top there. Contact information.
I skipped past it, thank you. Yeah, Susan Randall took a look at that, and, you know, it said that it's, it's required, just, just contact information is all you need. I think there was some discussion about like whether you had to provide your home address or something like that, and, and it's just, it's just contact information, so it can be what you want.
Okay.
If you would prefer it to be, you know, an email address that you, that you have just for this purpose, I think that would be, that would be appropriate. That's my understanding.
Okay. So it doesn't have to be all of the above. It can be whatever you choose, as long as there's contact information provided.
Yes.
Okay.
It says that open, if, if somebody were to submit an open records request with the city, they could, they could be entitled to that information provided, but it's, it's what you provide.
Okay. Otherwise, it seems to me like what we're doing here is fairly administrative, ministerial. It's pretty straightforward. There are no huge issues jumping off the page at me.
No, I, I thought, I mean, there's been some things back and forth and, you know, that have been edited. I think this version of them has really memorialized a lot of the discussion we had. I, I, you know, there's two things that I don't particularly, well, one I don't particularly care for and one I'm a little curious about, but it's, you know, cases should not be continued more than six times without value, without valid justification. That's an awful lot of continuances.
I'm okay with that. I think we can decide to make it less, but I think, you know, because of the ramifications of then going beyond that into, I'm sorry, I can't even think what it's called right now, where you continue something indefinitely.
Right.
Then you have to renotice and you have to do all that. As long as, you know, there are people at the table who are actually working together and actively working towards, we have a case currently, I actually had to recuse myself on it, but it's, you know, the health of the applicant has become an issue and so on. I'm okay with that. We can choose to, to shorten that if we want to.
Fair. It says should not be, it doesn't say shall not be, or, I mean, you know, so we, we have some leeway there. I just thought that was an awful lot of continuances. I would ask a question long before we got to six.
It is.
It, it does seem like some of these, just to me, right, we, we get the like one or two pages that are at the back of our agenda.
Yeah.
That sit there for several meetings. Or is that kind of your concern in this case?
Yeah, well, and sometimes, I mean, sometimes applicants are wanting to continue. In my view, the applicant is ultimately the driver of, you know, whether or not a case should make it here. They may not like the outcome, but they shouldn't be held hostage for some, you know, unreasonable length of time.
I agree.
Because we're, we're either going to vote for it or we're not.
But it goes both ways. I mean, it, over the years, I've seen any number of applicants who, you know, had massive protests that would continue a case and continue a case and continue a case, and lo and behold, every meeting, there would be fewer and fewer and fewer protests who were able to take the time away from work or to make the effort to get down here or whatever. So, I mean, I think it, that's something that just sort of goes both ways. You have to have a feel for it, you know?
Yep. One other thing I was going to ask everybody about that I was sort of like, let me think of an example. So section 6B says, "The commission may consider but, but shall continue applications if amendments proposed during a public hearing cannot be readily determined during the meeting to be in compliance with the technical standards, regulations, and ordinances and so forth, normally evaluated by city departments during the development review process and detailed in staff reports." I was even trying to think of an example of when we would have faced that. I, I mean...
I think, I, you know, I think generally, it's not something that happens very often, but, you know, there are times when, when there are such huge, it, it kind of speaks to that issue of trying to negotiate things from the horseshoe, whether there are such enormous changes that are being made to what's written, then staff hasn't really had it, we may be happy, but staff hasn't had a chance to weigh in with their two cents on, you weigh in with their two cents on, you know, what's being proposed.
Sure.
And at some point, you just get to where it's like, this is a little too much. I think we need to, you know, continue this and, and let staff have their say.
Got it. Well, there, there's provisions in here where we can amend it. I think this is a, a big step forward from what our bylaws are today, and I appreciate all the effort that staff in particular has put in to help kind of get this off high center. So thank you, Jeff, to you and everybody who's worked on it to try to get it there. I know there's been a lot of input there, so...
Can I ask, I just, it just suddenly occurred to me, does this, does this still say that the chair will only serve for a year?
Yes.
And if so, do we need to amend our bylaws to have Scott serve a second year? That's what we always did before. We would just vote to amend the bylaws.
It just says the term of office shall, shall be for one year from July 1st until the following June 30th.
It doesn't say only one term. Okay.
Nope. If there's no other discussion or comments on this from anybody, we just need a motion on this, and it would be a motion to adopt the bylaws.
Move.
So I have a motion and a second to adopt the bylaws that are included in our staff report today. Please cast your votes when available. It's been seconded by Commissioner Highsmith. And those bylaws are adopted. That's our last item on separate items under consideration, so we have communication and reports, Planning Commission committees. We don't have a formal committee. I will say we had the school committee call today, the first annual, and what I'll just say on that is that staff did an absolutely magnificent job. Jared was on that call and provided great input. Jonathan Lan did a wonderful job. Eric Winger spoke on it. Kim Cooper-Hart put it all together. Jeff did a wonderful job. I mean, it was, it was great.
And they were appreciative, too.
They were very appreciative. And I, and I, look, I think it's, you know, I think it's a great start to start having those meetings annually. I've asked for a list of the people who were in attendance. I'm going to send an email to those folks and thank them for their participation, and I'm also going to send an email to the people who didn't appear, encouraging their participation. And frankly, I think it would be valuable for us to keep and be mindful of what districts are staying involved in that process and participating in those meetings and which ones aren't. Because it's easy to come here and complain, it's a lot harder to be involved in trying to be solution-oriented, and I think the obligation goes both directions. So we're doing our best to provide information. Staff spent a tremendous amount of time working on it, and I know that they're working on some other things, too, to try to continue to improve that. So I'm just really impressed by the work that they did, and I thought it was, I thought it was very well done.
Doing committees, we don't really, really have a committee with respect to the issue of what realtors tell their clients about things that are going to stay the same or not. But I, I did have kind of a strange idea, based on really the work that you're doing with the school districts, but whether it would be appropriate for us to send a letter to the real estate commission emphasizing to them that this is a problem that we hear regularly and encouraging them to sort of be completely honest with their clients about what is and is not within their ability to control. We'd have to be very diplomatic about that. But specifically, I, I would like for the commissioners kind of think about whether they think that's a good idea or not. And both legal and staff, I would like for you to give me some kind of an indication of whether you think to send such a letter would be within our purview, you know?
Or just to provide input to somebody who could write that letter. It is a big issue.
It is a big issue.
I mean, I, I agree that it's a huge issue.
No, that's really all I have about that.
Top, top of my head, it sounds, it sounds like a good idea and, and within their, your purview, but we will take a look at it. I mean, I would hope that they, they may respond and say, "Well, yes, that maybe it's already in their code of ethics or their training regimen, but if, if not, that would certainly be a welcome addition." And if it is, then that would be good to emphasize.
Yep. It, it's kind of like the school thing, in a sense, at least, we can say, just so you know, we've issued a letter in the past to the, you know, Metropolitan Association Realtors to...
There is so little that we can do.
Yeah.
If this is something we can do, I'd like to do it, so...
Okay. If you don't mind, Jeff, will you look into, like, I mean, just kind of walk that through the proper channels and then tell us? Okay, that's a great idea. Planning Commission Minnabers, Commissioner Claire?
Nothing from me.
Commissioner Powers? Commissioner Coffey? Commissioner Privet?
No.
Commissioner Hinkle? Commissioner Highsmith? Pennington?
Just happy to be here and see your faces in person.
Yeah. This is great. Does anybody know the score of the softball game?
I don't.
No, 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 no.
I don't, but we don't want to know.
Okay, all right, don't say it, don't say it. Never mind. Sorry, sorry.
But I haven't.
I'm not going to go back and watch it. That guy's got it back there. I'm going to ask Kim afterward privately. Planning Department?
Nothing from me.
JJ, nothing? Municipal councillor? Sounds like you've got a letter coming.
No, 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 no.
I, I, I think that's going to be interesting, by the way.
That room's watching it.
So, that's the only, that's the last item of the citizens to be heard today. Sarah Welch, you got something you want to say?
Get back there for your side.
Yeah, yeah. All right. If there's no further business, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
The move.
All's in favor, aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
No? All right, we're adjourned. Thanks, guys.